Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting to order. The moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Ms. Hill.
Face the flag. Blue, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to recognize the elected officials in the audience. I see at least three of our county commissioners. I see Randy Smith, I see Justin Biggs, thanks for being here, and I know John Schoonmaker is here, there he is. Anyone else that I'm missing? Okay, is there somebody behind, I can't see whoever's behind, beside Justin. Okay, okay, thank you, thank you for being here. Just a reminder that Knox County Schools will be closed for winter break, December 23rd through January 3rd. Our teachers will report back on Monday, January 6th, for an in-service administrative day with students back in class on Tuesday, January 7th. On behalf of the Board, I would like to wish our students, staff, and families a wonderful, restful break. Very well deserved. Also, I would like to thank, I would like for Jonathan Schoonover from the Great Schools Partnership to help me with the next announcement. Is Jonathan here? There he is. If you would come forward and could you go ahead and share some of the detail from your recent conference that you attended with Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you Board, for the opportunity to speak in front of you guys. Just want to give you an update real quick. Yesterday, we were in Nashville. There was a kind of a cohort of us that traveled over there for a conference on, really focusing on removing some of the barriers for post-secondary success. And great conference, a lot of folks from around the state that were really trying to address this issue holistically. And we somewhat last minute invited Noah to come to speak on behalf of our student panel. And just want to give you guys a quick update. You know this already.
He's fantastic.
So, he did a great job representing Knox County well. He was very articulate, he spoke well, he was able to speak not only from his own experience, but to talk about students that experience other barriers, post-secondary barriers, that he doesn't experience. So he was a great representative to have, and just want to kind of give you guys an update on that, that another, just yet another reason for you to be proud of your student representative, of our student representative on the Board. So, thank you so much, Noah, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us, and Noah, thank you for being such a great representative on behalf of Knox County Schools and all our students. That's, that is quite an, a, an honor for you, and I appreciate how well you handle that, so thank you so much. Okay, Board members, there was no change to the agenda item itself, but you did receive by email yesterday a revised version of proposed new policy J-171. The revised version is attached to the electronic agenda. Also, I would like to request that Item 9E regarding the intragovernmental MOU related to relocating the KCS Central Office be moved near the front of your voting agenda and be considered just after consent agenda as Item 5D.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Yes, this is your discussion?
Yes.
I'm not saying I'm in opposition, but we did this the other night, and I do respect the time of our county employees, but, and our mayor and Chris Caldwell, but we have a lot of speakers that waited a long time the other night, and those are the citizens too that we represent. So, I just have concern that we're continuing to move this to the front. I'm not saying that I won't vote for it, but it just concerns me, and I wanted to go on record as saying, I think we need to be considerate of the people that have come to speak, since this is the second time we've moved that to the front, and most of the people that are, that affects will be, are on the county payroll, so.
Bounds, any other comments? Okay, and, so, all those in favor? So, do we need to vote on that? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to move that agenda item up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are those opposed?
No.
Okay, so, one, one opposition, one no vote, and the motion carries. Are there other requested changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to request that Item 9E, the, that you just referred to, the approved intragovernmental memorandum of understanding with Knox County Commission, and then Knox County Mayor to relocate the Knox County Schools to Central Office, to the TVA Towers, be removed from the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and, and a second, and discussion. Would you like to address that, Ms. Bounds?
I'd like to ask our Law Department to address that, please.
Mr. Dubler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Bounds. I believe our, our position's been made clear, as, as the Knox County Law Department. Mr. Armstrong spoke at the commission meeting Monday evening, and I spoke about this item last week. Our, our position is that the MOU and the current draft contract are illegal as-is. Not that they can't be made legal, but they're not in proper legal form at this time. I'll also say that, again, that the Law Department's not on either side of, of this controversy, whether, whether the school system stays in the AJ Building or goes to the TVA Tower. Our sole duty is to uphold the Charter and represent each of the, of the parts of the government of Knox County, and me specifically, to represent this Board. I mean, the move and the contracts need to be legal. Again, that can be done. At the commission meeting the other night, it was mentioned, a Tennessee Attorney General opinion. We are more than happy to help facilitate that. So if the Tennessee Attorney General weighs in and, and says that the, that the move can be done as-is, then we will certainly be, be happy to bow out. But, but as-is, that's our position, thank you.
Okay, do we have other discussion? Ms. Hill?
Mr. Dubler, is, is this a correct statement? Regardless of what the Knox County Board of Education does about this matter, our, our vote is not a required or necessary step in this process?
Thank you, Ms. Hill. I would say that, our, our office would say that that statement is false, that, that the Knox County Board of Education is a required step in moving the Knox County Schools Central Office to another location.
Okay, Ms. Bounds?
Oh, is that all the discussion?
Anyone else have discussion?
If not, then I would just like to ask for a roll call vote on that.
Could I make a friendly amendment and ask that we use the word defer instead of removed?
I would be agreeable to that.
Okay, so, so then the motion would be to defer this agenda item to, to Jan, to our January meeting? Would that be agreeable?
It would be fine.
Okay, do we have discussion on this?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a second by Ms. Owen. Ms. Satterfield?
Well, I agree with the deferment, but I would prefer it, the deferment to be when the documentation is legal versus just January, because if we just sit on it, or whoever that's not making it legal just sits on it, then we'll be right back here.
Okay, so would she ask Patty if she's agreeable to that? Okay, so would you like to, to ask Ms. Bounds if she's agreeable to that?
Board Member Bounds, would you agree to making the deferment until the document is legal?
I think it's just getting better and better, yes, I would, thank you, I agree.
Okay, and I think Ms. Hill's light was next, or was it Ms. Bab? Ms. Bab?
I actually had the opportunity to watch the county commission meeting on Monday night, and had a lot of questions, and due to it, and having a lot of conversation, I would like to make a substitute motion at this point that I think might help with some of these issues, because I think what we're worried about is illegality of things. So this is my substitute motion. I move that the Board of Education express its support to relocate the administrative offices of the Knox County Schools from the Andrew Johnson Building to the TVA East Tower, subject to confirmation that such a relocation would not violate state law relating to the custody and control by the school board of, by the school board of school facilities, and that the county be requested to provide a revised MOU consistent with this motion for consideration at the next meeting of the Board of Education. What I'm really asking us to do is, just from my different conversations, the county needs to know if we, if legalities can get, be done away with, would we want to move forward? And what I'm asking us to vote on is not any kind of binding agreement, but giving them the okay that we're interested in this, if it can be made legal through an Attorney General opinion or going through the legislature, and we might need to have some people speak to that, because they were speaking about it at the meeting, on county commission meeting on Monday, and it was information I had never heard, and I don't know how many of us listened to the county commission meeting Monday night. But I feel like this would keep us from voting on the MOU, but giving the county an idea of if our Board, if everything could get worked out, would be interested in moving forward. So that is the substitute motion that I am putting forward.
Okay, we have a second on the substitute motion. Ms. Christie seconds that mo, that substitute motion, okay, and I'm not sure whose light was on first. Ms. Owen? Okay, was it Ms. Hill?
But I, I just want, I, I'll go, it doesn't matter to me. I was just going to ask Mr. Dubler if this is, how this is substantially different from the MOU we have before. How, how is this motion substantially different from the MOU?
Mr. Dubler?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Owen. As I understand the motion posed by Ms. Bab, it's, it, the way she phrased it is that the Board is expressing interest in moving forward if it could be made legal, so with that type of motion, the Law Department would not have an objection.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Ms. T, uh, Ms. Hill?
Thank you, I have a comment, and then I noticed Mr. Caldwell standing there, and with the Board's permission, I'd like to hear from him, but I think part of the dilemma that we've been struggling with is what is in fact the opinions of so many different entities in this, legal, legally, from the Law Department to representation that, that our county law officers have, or the county mayor has, so I'm, I'm not, that, I just would like to make that as a comment. If we could hear from Mr. Caldwell?
Yes, Mr. Caldwell?
I'm going to defer to Mark Mametoff, he's here today, and let him speak to this. We're in favor of the substitute, and he can explain more why, there's a couple of points to it, but he's more well-versed than I am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Mark Mametoff, I represent the county as their bond counsel and helped out with special projects and effectively worked for the mayor. I think there was some confusion on my role, I just want to be very, very clear that in no way do I represent TVA or never have represented TVA, so my sole representation is for the county. It's quite expensive to draft the request for an Attorney General opinion, to do that legal work, it's also expensive to draft legislation, to seek the help to do that. If this Board does not want to move, even if we resolve the legal issues, we want to husband county resources in a wise and effective manner, and not pay people like me to keep pursuing this if you guys really aren't interested in moving. And so, we were hoping that you would give us some direction, whether you all are interested in doing it, assuming. We, we're not here to debate with the Law Director, you know, I, I personally have a great relationship, I feel like, with the Law Director and with Mr. Sturkey, who I've been working with hand in hand for almost a year and a half on this matter. We want to get this issue resolved, we don't want to ask you all to do anything that's even close to questionably legal, but we don't want to continue to expend the legal resources and the time to pursue this if you guys really aren't interested in, in pursuing this, and, and, and I know the mayor would ask that you do, but, you know, that's, and the question that I think Ms. Hill asks is whether it's even, your approval's even necessary, we're not even here to debate that. We want, hope that you all will support this, and, and, and we're asking politely that you do, but we would really ask you to give us some guidance, because we don't want to use county resources in this manner if it's not a good thing for you all to, to consider.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fa, um, Ms. Hill, did you have a follow-up for that? Ms. Bounds?
I just have some concerns. I, I think it's almost like we're dealing with two different things, and I appreciate your substitute motion, but this has been two years that we've been dealing with this, and it just really bothers me that we're at this point, and we're having to do amendments, substitute motions, and everything, at this late date, and there seems to be a real urgency to get this done, from what I understand, transpired today, so it just concerns, and concerns me, and I'm not sure that I can support the substitute motion, but thank you.
Ms. Bab?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Mr. Mametoff, could you give a little explanation on what we're asking the AG to rule on, just so that everybody can understand the legality issues that are going on?
Well, the specific request Attorney General would have to come from a legislative representative, first of all, to make it clear, so we'd have to ask one of our delegations to submit it. I think they would gladly do that, but we would have to go through that process. We would be asking the Attorney General whether the custody and control provisions that have given the Law Director's office quite a bit of concern, and obviously Mr. Dubler can address that if, if you want further elaboration on that, whether they apply to this type of facility, or whether they're entitled, intended to apply to traditional school facilities, such as obviously schools, there's no doubt in the world that you guys have total control where you locate schools and things like that, but there is quite a bit of doubt in my mind, and again, Mr. Dubler's field of disagree, and, and, but I've talked about this openly, is whether that, those same rules apply to the administrative offices of the schools, and so, you know, you still will be able to fully undertake your business if you move to the TVA Towers, you're just going to be living under, you would be operating under a federal, in a federal building, under tighter security concerns, and so, do those tighter security concerns, really is the big topic, do they violate your right to control the school system? And so, it's a good, a great question, and if the answer is yes, and, and, and the Law Director is correct, we'd obviously have to fix that legislatively, and we, and if you want to get something in the legislative hopper and ask somebody to sponsor it, we would need to be doing that between now and January, before you all would meet again, so that's one reason, again, we would not want to proceed and incur the cost and time of drafting legislation, asking someone to introduce it, again, if you guys are not interested in, in pursuing it, and at that point, the, the mayor has to look at other options, if you all are, are, you know, just philosophically opposed to this.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Ms. Bounds? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, it, it looks like the substitute motion will sort of clarify the positions that Mr. Mametoff's looking for, and, so I'm going to speak against the substitute motion and in favor of deferring for 30 days, given all the questions that we've got around the move, around the move. I was provided just today, this is the contracts within the MOU, about 300 pages, it's packed full of blanks, we don't know what many of the specifics are in these contracts, and it's been stated also, in some of the arguments about this, that in the move, which just happens to be down from one end of Gay Street to the other practically, that the, one major issue that I've got is that the building suddenly becomes less accessible, and so, we, you know, in government, that's a big deal, to, to make, to make yourselves as available as you can be, it's hard enough to, to get things done, you know, and get heard. So, I'm expressing, you know, my position about the move simultaneously while I'm speaking against the substitute motion and for deferment.
Okay. Ms. Owen, were you next? Thank you.
I, I have another question. If we are saying that we are interested, are we also saying that we are not interested in asking the county to fulfill the memorandum of understanding and present multiple sites to us for consideration?
Mr. Dubler?
That's a good question, thank you, Ms. Owen. I, the way I understand the motion, I don't think you're excluding the other, I think what you're, what you're saying with the substitute motion, as Mr. Mametoff has spoken to, is that you're interested in, in pursuing, you know, whether or not this, this whole move and deal could be made legal to TVA Tower. I mean, he is right, he's worked with Charlie Sturkey in our office, and they've worked on it for some time, and, and some progress has been made recently, it's my understanding, I talked, I talked to Mr. Sturkey before I came in here, so, you know, negotiations are ongoing, so, my understanding of the substitute motion is that you're not excluding other, other possibilities, but you are saying, hey, we do want to pursue this possibility and see where it can go.
Would it be possible to add to that language of, of the motion that we would also like to see other properties? Is that a friendly amendment or not?
I'll go up to you.
Sure.
Okay, so if, if we could say that we are interested in, in considering that one as well as others, I think that, that would clear up that question for me.
Okay, Ms., I think Ms. Bounds, were you next?
Yes, probably so, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I too watched the commission meeting that Tommy recorded for me until well after midnight, that was quite interesting, and there were two takeaways in that commission meeting, and one was to wait on the, I think the vote was, I don't know, somewhere seven to four, I don't know, anyway, to wait on the Attorney General's recommendation before they moved ahead, and also to, there was a lot of discussion about another site, and there was a lot of discussion amongst the commissioners, and I got the impression that they were going to maybe ask for a study to look at the Knoxville Center Mall or the East Town Study, or these town centers. So, there were two things there that I think, from watching the commission meeting, the takeaway that I have is there's two different things, which goes back to Ms. Owen's thing that the MOU that the county commission and the Board entered into in 2015, from what I understand, and Mr. Dubler, you can correct me, MOU is basically when two parties agree, but in this case, that MOU was never in any way fulfilled with the 12 sites that, and so, it just makes me question, if the first MOU was not adhered to, I'm very reluctant to move into a second MOU, because there were never 12 sites presented for the Board to decide which site was best for the school property, so, those are my thoughts. And I would support...
The additional language?
Well, I like the fact of what Ms. Satterfield, not just the 30 days, but the other language.
Okay, Ms. Kristi?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I can respect the fact that they need to know where we stand before they pour so much time and resources into something that we may or not even be interested in, and I get that, but I also have a question, and I don't know, Mr. Caldwell, if you could answer this, is, and I had heard something, and I don't know if this is true or not, but does UT have similar concerns with the control and custody issues of the contract, do you know?
Sure, so I, I do know that, that the Law Director has stated, and it's stated on Monday, that UT have, has the same concerns as he has, related to the TVA contract. David Miller from UT is here, he can answer that question if you would like, and give you your answer.
Mr. Miller?
Good afternoon, my name is David Miller, I'm the Senior Vice President and Chief Financial Officer of the University of Tennessee System. We are excited about this opportunity, but let me just answer the question directly. The University of Tennessee, our Board of Trustees, and the State of Tennessee don't have any concerns about our being a tenant via an easement in the building. If we were a state agency in a state building in Nashville, as the state agency tenant, we wouldn't have full control and custody of that building either, the Capitol Police would have control of that building, so it's a very similar situation to our sister state agencies.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, whose light was on first? Ms. Owen?
I have a question for Mr. Dubler. While UT may not have the same concerns, is it because they are controlled differently, and that this body is a publicly elected body, and therefore custody would be differently con- considered?
Mr. Dubler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Owen. I'd say two things. One, I know Mr. Armstrong had been dealing directly with, and Mr. Sturkey had been dealing directly with contacts with UT. I know there was an email expressing the same types of concerns as far as not, not being able to have UT police armed in the TVA Tower, but I'm not, I'm not here to argue with this UT representative. What I will say is that Tennessee Code 49, and specifically 49-2203, applies specifically to local boards of education, of which the Knox County Board is one. So yes, that doesn't apply to UT. And the Knox County Charter, which applies to all of Knox County government, also does not apply to UT. And those are the, the state statute, and the, and the county charter is what is causing us the most problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bounds?
No, that was what I was going to ask, and I thank you, Mr. Dubler. I think you made that quite clear, the distinction between Knox County Schools and Knox County Government and Charter Government versus UT.
Ms. Hill?
I think what I'm hearing from, from the county offices is that they want to know if these legal issues are worked out, if we in fact would agree to the move to TVA. I'm, I'm not sure that's an issue with people, with some of the people on this board. I think that, that it wouldn't matter what was worked out legally, that, that some board members just do not want to go there, period. So I think to, I have some concerns about the, about the amendment to the amendment, if that's where we are in this, that to, to say, yes, we would agree to that and other sites is not really what I hear our county government asking for. So I guess if, Mr. Caldwell, if you could just please clarify, clarify that for us.
Sure. Let me be clear. Never in the MOU that was, that was approved did it say we would bring back 12 sites. 12 sites was never a number in that MOU. It says we would bring back viable sites. And so, what we brought back, and we can give you a list of other sites that was looked at with cost components, and you can look at that, but as we dealt with the administration, we knew an idea of what was being, what they would like to spend on central office space. And so in doing so, what was presented to you at the September 11th joint meeting was the one viable site and the other viable site being staying in the Andrew Johnson Building. So in retrospect, you have two sites to choose from. One is a move to the TVA East Tower, and your other option is to remain put in the Andrew Johnson Building. Those are your viable options that was in the MOU.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hill.
So to clarify, then, you are, is that the question you in fact would like for us to resolve?
I'm okay with what Ms. Owen wants, wants to add, but ultimately, if there's another site that you're interested in, the, the MOU, then that's been worked out, wouldn't be valid for that site. So this was a negotiation that was done between the mayor and the superintendent as it relates to the one site. And so if, if this board chose another option that, that we looked at that had a, a, what we thought was a high, was a higher price tag than what was viable, like take Rural High School, had a $30 million price tag. I don't think anybody wants to spend $30 million on central office space. If you wanted to do that, then the MOU that's worked out wouldn't be the same.
Okay. Ms., I think Ms. Bounds, you were next.
Yes, I gave all of you a copy of the letter that the Law Director sent to the mayor, and so it's right here before me. And I just wanted to clarify some things, and you're correct, Chris, it did not say 12 sites, but it does say, the parties entered into an agreement where Knox County would present several properties and plans for the Board of Education to evaluate as potential sites for the Board of Education to have administrative offices. And then it also goes on to say Knox County Purchasing will locate amenable sites and present them to the Board of Education for consideration. The Knox County Schools and Knox County Government commit to working cooperatively in this effort to select an appropriate new site and relocate the schools headquarters, systems headquarters. It was agreed upon that the Board of Education would then evaluate the proposed sites, not site, select a proposed option and present it to the County Commission. Let me read that again. It was agreed that the Board of Education would then evaluate the proposed sites, select a proposed option, and present it to the Knox County Commission. Once accepted by the Commission, the Board of Education would take the necessary steps to move its offices. So that I think helps to clarify. It go, well, let me read on. TVA East Tower is the only site proposed by the administration under the agreement for consideration by the Board of Educational. Initially, the Law Department was requested to do contracts with TVA to lease the East Tower for 15 years and purchase and own the Summer Place Site. So I can read on, but you all have it at your seats, so I just wanted that clarification.
I would make a point that what's in Mr. Armstrong's letter isn't what the MOU said. It did not go in, in those specifics. He's interpreting that MOU. What the MOU said was that, that Knox County procurement, which was involved in the process that reports to me, would present viable sites, and that's what was done.
Okay. Ms., I think Ms. Bab was next.
Yeah, I would just like to concur with Ms. Hill, that I, I would like us to vote and give an indication for this substitute motion, because if you're never going to agree with this TVA Tower, we do need to let the county know. And if a majority of us are never going to agree to it, they need to know that so that they keep wasting their time on us, and we don't waste our time on the money, as Mr. Mametoff said, of going through the motions of getting these issues taken care of. They have talked about trying to work out these issues, and if we are wanting to possibly look at TVA, if these issues can be looked out, I just think we need to make that indication. But I, I do, I do think we as a group, I mean, I mean, this is the only forum. I mean, it'd be great if we could close the door and all hash this out, but that is not the way we talk about things, and it's not the way we can talk to the, as a group, to the county about it. And they do need to know something. I mean, this has been going on since, I don't know, when we had that group meeting with, with the county commission, and they just, I feel like, need to know where we stand.
Okay. Ms. Owen?
I think it's difficult to say where we stand when we have an MOU that says we will, that there will be located amenable sites, and the county will present them to the Board of Education. That's clearly more than one. Whether it's two or 12, the number that they keep telling us they've looked at was 12, but if they located 12 amenable sites, how those were narrowed down or considered, we don't know, because they were never presented to us. So either way we go about it, whether we say we would or wouldn't look at the tower, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that I feel that there's a lot of trust here, that what we say is going to happen is going to happen. If, if we say that, sure, we're willing to look at it, and then we move forward, are we going to ever see any other sites? Are there ever going to be any other considerations? It seems to me that, I don't know, I've lost a lot of trust here with an MOU that's not being followed.
Ms. Bounds? Okay. Um, would you mind restating your substitute motion so we can make sure we're all on the same page?
And let me just be clear. Jennifer, you wanted to add, you wanted to add, and other sites, basically, to what I'm saying? Okay. As a substitute motion, I move that the Board of Education express its support to relocate the administrative offices of the Knox County Schools from the Andrew Johnson Building to the TVA East Tower or other sites to be presented, subject to confirmation that such a relocation would not violate state law relating to the custody and control by the school board of school facilities, and that the county be requested to provide a revised memorandum of understanding consistent with this motion for consideration at the next meeting of the Board of Education. That's all I'm trying to get us to vote on. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Christie, did you have a question? Okay. Okay.
And I, I think that I would like to hear what the Attorney General has to say, so, and I, I've heard from many community members that have additional questions, so I think that that will also give additional time for those questions to be answered. So I would be in agreement with the substitute motion, so that we can have further clarity on the legality of, of the issue. So Ms. Cootney, can we have a roll call, vote, and we'll begin and just, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. McMillan?
Can I ask a question in reference to what you said?
Yes.
What, you said that you would like to hear what the Attorney General had to say. Are we automatically, if, if our resolution or substitute passes, are we automatically seeking that? I didn't hear that.
Can I answer? We're not going to be seeking it. What we're saying is, we're indicating to the county, we have an interest in this, and they would be then pursued.
Okay. Now, my question is, who? Let's be specific. Let's just don't let it say the county.
Mr. Mametoff, could you come up and address that more directly, exactly how that issue transpires?
Yes, Ms. McMillan, we would, we have to ask one of the legislative representatives to submit it for us, and so we would ask one of our delegations to submit the request, and certainly we'll be working with the Law Director's Office to identify something that folks would be mutually sad, you know, represented. We probably would ask one of our state senators to submit the request for us.
Okay, that's fine. But just to be clear, it would be between you and the higher law department, correct?
Definitely. I mean, because if I wrote it, and it was not satisfactory to the Law Department, and they said, well, you didn't ask the right question, Mr. Mametoff, then it's not going to resolve anything, and so we certainly need to work collaboratively to get, to get that, to get that done. And so, yes, it would be, we certainly, I, I'm not going to, I know you're not suggesting this, but I'm not going to be winging it and doing. I would certainly get with them to make sure that what we submit addresses the Law Director's concerns and, and presents the question that, that, that he wants to present. And he and I have talked about that, and, and, and that's exactly what we would need to do, is to get, make sure we submit the, the right question.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that there wasn't a vague general term like county or the county government, or that we, that we can identify at least one or two individuals that are responsible for making it happen, so to speak.
My guess is poor Charlie Sturkey's going to be stuck with me longer and, and work on this. And I did talk, I believe was, we were very grateful that the CFO for UT came in, and President Boyd also called me earlier today to let me know that he would, would do whatever he could to ask for this to be expedited, that he is really supportive of this project as well, and would reach out to the Attorney General and, and ask, ask for him not to influence his ruling, but to ask him to expedite this so we could get back to you all as soon as possible on this. Again, he has no obligation to respond. I want to make sure the clear, the Attorney General could decide. I just don't want to rule on this, but we will pursue a legislative fix at the same time, because again, we want absolutely no doubt for any of you all that anything you're voting on is legal or illegal. But as Ms. Bab said several times, is like, if, if you all as a majority just don't think this is a bad idea, then we need to plan differently, and, and, and I certainly think, to go back to Ms. Owen's thing, is we certainly can come back in January and go through each, each of the other sites that were looked at, why they were not, in the terms of the MOU, amenable to the county, and therefore they were not presented to you as the county of the option because of the high cost of those sites. So the only amenable sites in the county administrative judgment to submit to you are the two that Mr. Caldwell identified, the TVA Tower or staying where you are in the AG building. Those are the only two amenable sites to the county administration. So you're not going to get more amenable sites to the administration next thing. So I don't want to mislead you all, unless you all have some new sites you want us to look at. And, and Mr. Norman and I are longtime friends. We've talked a little about the East Town. And that would be years and years in the future before that site could be presented to you all. And if that's what you want as a whole, that's fine. It just will take a long time. And so, again, we greatly would respect your all decision if that's what you want to do, but we would just be very grateful if you'd give us some guidance that, hey, if you can work out these legal issues, we're interested. And if you say, look, I just don't want to do this, we want to hear that just as well and shake, you know, shake hands, we're friends, let's move on to something else, so I don't have to sit through another 50 hours of meetings with TVA's lawyers. It's, it's, it's been fun, but not that much fun. So thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. So Ms. Cootney, we'll do a roll call, vote, beginning with District Nine.
We have that stated again, and are we on a, are we on a substitute motion?
Yes, we are on a substitute.
Not amended. We are.
The substitute motion. Ms. Bab, would you read that again?
I'll read it again.
Okay. Well, the original motion was what?
To defer.
To defer.
To defer.
For 30 days.
For 30 days was the original motion.
All right.
And then we had a, then we had an amendment. Yes.
That's a substantial change.
We had, we had an amendment to defer, not to, not for 30 days, but just to defer, was that the?
I feel it was legal.
Until the legalities could be worked out.
Yeah.
Then Ms. Bab made a substitute motion.
If, if I may, if I may, Ms. Hill and, and Madam Chair, so, so you can vote on the substitute motion. If you vote for the substitute motion, then the underlying motion is done, is done away with. If you vote against the substitute motion, then, then you all can take up the underlying motion again and have some more discussion to iron out whatever language you want.
Okay. Is that clear? So we'll repeat the substitute motion, and if you, if you vote yes, you're voting for the substitute motion. So if you'll read that again, Ms. Bab.
As a substitute motion, I move that the Board of Education express its support to relocate the administrative offices of the Knox County Schools from the Andrew Johnson Building to the TVA East Tower or other subject, subject properties that will be presented, subject to confirmation that such a relocation would not violate state law relating to the custody and control by the school board of school facilities, and that the county be requested to provide a revised memorandum of understanding consistent with this motion for consideration at the next meeting of the Board of Education.
Mr. McMillan?
Just a question, I guess, for the Law Director. If you, if you want more time to discuss this than just next month, in January, then you would be opposed to the substitute motion, correct?
Mr. Dubler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. If the, if we're not able to work out the legalities by the time it comes back before the board, whether it's January or otherwise, then, then our office would, would at least ask for more time to do so.
Okay. But if this should fail, which they probably won't, but if it should fail, then we go back to what Ms. Satterfield was saying about adding time for the discussion and whatnot.
Correct. I mean, right, you go back to the underlying motion proposed by Ms. Bounds, and then, and then you've got some friend. then you've got some friendly amendments, if those are accepted.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, okay, end of it.
So, if it didn't say at the next meeting? He's, he's objecting to the last language, if it, so.
Again, it can come forth, and we don't have to.
Yeah. So, so your objection is at the, it says at the next meeting, at the end of her motion, essentially. Okay. Okay.
I just think, I like.
Ms. Satterfield's.
Ms. Bounds and Ms. Satterfield's, because there's not a specific time limit on it. And I mean, I've been around government a long time, and I, this, this is one that I have, it's different from anything I've ever seen while I was on the commission. There are people that want it to happen, and I'm not even sure that they know why they want it to happen, but somebody told them it was a good thing. And it really concerns me that we don't have control up there, that we're going to have to walk, you know, if it's, if it's at night, that where we park, we can't park like we can here, or across the street, and what, that, that concerns me, not so much for myself, but for, you know, for others, particularly the ladies and stuff. And I know, if I said that, "Oh, we'll take care of that, we'll hire," you know, that makes some ridiculous claims. So, there's something going on here, I'm just not sure exactly what it is. That's my opinion, for what little it's worth. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Cote?
Ms. Christie?
Okay, this is Sonley.
This is, a yes vote would be for the substitute motion.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Bounds?
No.
Ms. Hill? Ms. Bab?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
That's five yes votes. The motion passes? Okay. Okay. Let's see. So, I think, still have not approved the agenda, is that correct? Okay. So, we're back to that. Any other changes to the agenda?
Actually, Ms. Bab made a motion, and Ms. Christie made a motion, a second on that, and the vote was eight to one. Ms. Owen, did you vote no to approval of the agenda, or just moving item nine E?
Just moving the item.
Okay. So, we're ready to go forward? Did we vote, so we did vote?
And Mr. Dupler, does five D need to be read into the record?
Thank you. So, you voted to, to move the, the item, but then, but then that item's already been taken care of, so I think, I think, Madam Chair, you were asking if there were any other changes, so if there are no other changes, then you can, then you can move forward by acclamation.
Wonderful. Ms. Cote, can you read the consent agenda, and then we'll move to the next item?
Item five, consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Hill, a second by Mr. Norman. All in favor, or any discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries.
Item six A, approve second reading of new Knox County Board of Education policy C-220 automated external defibrillator.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Was that you? Okay, do we have discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six B, approve second reading of new Knox County Board of Education policy C-230 best photography, video retention, and viewing.
So moved.
Any discussion? We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six C, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-370 graduation requirements as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six D, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-441 wellness policy, physical activity as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six E, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-450 public charter schools as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six F, approve second reading of Knox County Board of Education policy J-580 student suicide prevention as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? Motion carries.
Six G, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education policy C-231 surveillance with photograph, video retention, and viewing.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Owen. Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Six H, approve first reading of new Knox County Board of Education policy J-171 released time religious instruction.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hill. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Bounds, and I believe we have public forum speakers, and before you go to that, I just want to make sure the audience knows, we had a work session last week on this agenda, so we've discussed these items already. In addition, we've discussed the policies in policy review meetings, so, just so everyone is aware, and, Ms. Bab?
Sure. We will start public forum. Each person, as I call you up, please state your name and county of residence. I do know we have a couple of people from outside of our county, and at that point, we will need to vote as a board as to whether it's okay for you to speak. I also would just personally like to say, after last week's meeting, I hope that everybody in the audience will respect everyone that speaks, and don't comment during their speaking. I mean, we, as a board, try to be respectful of everyone that speaks, and we really hope that y'all will also be respectful of the people speaking. Thank you. Al Elliott? Please state your name and county of residence.
I'm Al Elliott, and I live in Knox County. I'm a parent of a child in Knox County Schools. I was raised in a Christian, Christian family. I went to church and Sunday School growing up. I was the kid with all the questions, the kid that was given answers like, "God works in mysterious ways, you just have to have faith," and other phrases that amount to, "Don't ask questions." Since no one was willing to give, willing to answer my questions, I went seeking out the answers myself. I spent a lot of time in my teen years studying as many religions as I could. What I ended up learning is that nearly all religions, including Satanism, have something in their core beliefs, worded in different ways, that you should treat others how you want to be treated, where I don't need to worship a deity to do this. Fast forward a few years, and I have my own child. I chose to raise my child without religion. Now, I get feedback from my child's teachers fairly often. You would think, given their godless upbringing, that a lot of, and a lot of the comments made last week about the importance of children to learn morality through God, that the feedback I hear is all negative. That's not the case. Without God, I managed to raise a child that teachers love having in their class. They are kind, compassionate, responsible, have a lust for learning, and are so determined to succeed in life. So, I'm slightly offended, as I'm sure any Muslim, Hindu, or any other non-Christian parent would be, at the implication made by school board members, that children need God in order to have morality. Also, last week, a school board member talked about how one hour, once a month, of lost art, music, gym, or library time wouldn't make a negative impact. This was the same school board member that on January 23rd posted on Facebook, quote, "Yesterday, one of my grandchildren didn't get to go to the library because it was being used for testing. Later that day, she didn't get to go to art because her classes were being tested. The other grandchild spoke up and said, 'That is one reason why Grammy ran for school board.'" Out of the mouths of babes, "So sad for all children," end quote. Yes, they're right. It is so sad for all children, which is why I don't understand how they can now say that missing these classes one hour, once a month, won't negatively impact them. Feedback from teachers was also mentioned last week, and someone said that they would never devalue teachers of the arts, but if those teachers pooled their efforts and mobilized against the state for more teachers' classes and time, they could probably make a difference. If you believe it is worth them mobilizing against the state for more time, then you should recognize the important, importance of them mobilizing against this policy. Rather than trying to redirect their focus to the state, maybe you should listen to them. Despite all your reputable studies, they are telling you loud and clear that this program is and will negatively impact their instruction time, and you're choosing to ignore them. I also heard a school board member quote a reliable study from 2016 that said, "Only 19.26% of Knox County residents are actively involved in church," and blamed the endless cycle of sports on weekends and homework at night. This is not the school board's responsibility to fix. The school board's job is to worry about math, science, history, and arts. It's not your job to worry about how many, how much time families are getting in church. Sports are extracurricular. This means that families can opt out of them in order to get their religious studies in. That's on them to figure out, not you. Even with this program, 70 out of 384 students is only 18%. That's less than the percentage of families actively involved in church, so is it even fixing things? Last, I'd like to address procedures that were mentioned many times as answers to how school board would handle insurance, background checks, and transferring of children, et cetera. Will the Church of Sturkey Hill have the, have to go back and fulfill these procedures before starting back at Sturkey, or will they just apply to future programs? The satanic, if the satanic ministry has to jump through more hoops than they did, that would be a problem. Also, with all the talks about background checks, they do not tell you who has gotten away with, or who has an intent. They only tell you who has been found guilty, or who has been caught with sexual abuse or other issues. If, the percentage that Jametta mentioned last week about check, background checks and teachers who are fired for sexual abuse is correct, it goes to show that even with background checks, the more people we blindly hand our children off to, the more opportunities there will be for children to be groomed and abused. It's the job of school board and the schools to keep these children safe during the day. This is not the way to do it. If parents want to exercise their right to remove children for religious instruction time as the law allows, let them do this on their own by checking students out by themselves and transferring them. We don't need churches coming into the schools for parents to exercise their rights.
Thank you. Tim Rogers?
Tim Rogers, Knox County resident, Superintendent Thomas, Madam Chair, Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know, I just want to say thank you. It's been a long and difficult, but I think, important conversation, and I think we're all happy it's to the point that we can vote, you can vote on this issue tonight. I simply want to ask that, that you give me the opportunity to boil it down to its essence. There's been a real effort to complicate this issue beyond what I think it is. I think that the vote, the vote on this policy is a very simple vote, is Knox County Schools intending to be friendly and accommodating to the request of parents who want religious instruction during the school day for their children. I've heard board members say that they recognize that's a right, they recognize parents can do that on their own, and this policy is simply a gesture of saying, "We want to be cooperative, we want to work with our parents." And remember all that the school system is asking of us parents, and I can say, "I want Knox County to be the best district in America because my kids are in this system." I am a parent, and I think back of all the things that have been asked of me, and I'm very happy to contribute. I think of art supplies, and cleaning supplies, and tissues, and lab fees, and money for school parties, and money for a variety of other things, and coupon books, my goodness, coupon books. And as you can guess, I've got a lengthy list, and I'm not going to go through it, but as a parent, we are asked a lot to help make you all successful, and make our kids successful, and we're happy to do it. Education at its best is a wonderful dance between the school system and parents, but at the end of the day, they are my kids, and it is my responsibility to make sure they're educated, and I'm thankful for the help in that process of doing it. So, this is not about child protection. I can say, our foundation has given millions of dollars towards child protection. We want kids safe, and the volunteers at Sturkey Hills have gone through a background check, and I would require that, require that of anybody who does a release time program. We accept that. This is not about a statement of disrespect for art or music teachers at all. I hope we have the best art and music departments in America. I hope we do. This is not that. I look at all the other arguments I heard last week, and it reminds me that the Book of Ecclesiastes says, "There's nothing new under the sun," and I, and I was struck by, I wonder how many people have actually gone back and read the Supreme Court case. Seventy-seven years ago, the Supreme Court decided this was constitutional, it was legal, it was a parent's right, and these are some of the arguments that they heard in opposition to that, and I'll quote straight from it. The opposition at that time was arguing that there's the appearance of the weight and influence of the school behind a program of religious instruction. Supreme Court said, "That's an invalid argument." Second argument, "Public school teachers police it, keeping tab on students who are released." We heard that over and over last week. The Supreme Court said, "That's not a valid argument." Thirdly, "The classroom activities come to a halt while students who are released for religious instruction are on leave." We heard that over and over. They heard that 77 years ago, and the Supreme Court said, "That's not a valid argument." Fourthly, "It says the school is a crutch on which churches are leaning for support in their religious training." Our Supreme Court said, "That's not a valid argument." We've heard over and over arguments that are retread and retread, and Supreme Court has simply said, "Those are not valid reasons to deny parents this opportunity." And I only want to close with, as a defense of parents, saying, "You're going to hear from a lot of parents, and I hope that what you would say as a vote of yes for this policy is a way of saying, 'We hear you, and we want to accommodate what you believe is an important need for your kids.'" I gave you a quote last week from this Supreme Court case, and I'll quote it again. It says, "When the state cooperates with religious authorities by adjusting the schedule of public events to sectarian needs, it follows the best of our traditions." Now, in Paul Harvey fashion, let me give you the rest of the story. Picking up from that quote, it then says this, "For it then respects the religious nature of our people and accommodates the public service to the spiritual needs." And if you plan to vote no, hear this one, and this is the reason why at 32, 33, sorry, straight school boards, sorry, 23 straight school boards have unanimously voted yes, because I don't think they wanted to be on the opposite side of this. It says, "To hold that it may not," in other words, that you shouldn't accommodate the spiritual needs of people. To hold that it may not would be to find in the Constitution a requirement that the government show a callous indifference to the religious groups. Show a callous indifference to religious groups. And then the next sentence says, "And to do that would be preferring those who believe in no religion over those who do believe." From the Supreme Court's own words, it's basically saying that to say that we are not going to allow release time is to say that the only religious perspective is those who do not believe in any deity at all. It's to endorse atheism, and that's it. Hear the perspective of parents who simply say, "I want religious instruction for my kids. I hear you, and I want to be friendly, and I want to be accommodating, and I want us to work together to meet those needs." Thank you.
Clayton Wood?
Clayton Wood, Knox County. I'm listening to a bunch of legal opinions tonight, and I'm going to have to give you another one. I know that may not be the most sought-after piece of this evening, but my background's in constitutional law. I practiced in constitutional law for most of my legal career, and worked often with school boards, often with school boards who had a lot of folks who had legal opinions that were wrong. And the legal opinions that were wrong were around the First Amendment issues that have been discussed somewhat tonight. I want you guys to know, without any shadow of a doubt, that what is contemplated for Knox County is completely legal, and that is at the federal level, at the state level, and now what you guys can do. What you're being asked to do is actually more restrictive than what is allowed under the state law. Under state law, it could be a weekly release time. Instructional release time is something that is important, it is precious, but it's tied to what? Academic performance. I'll tell you that when people are looking and saying, "Is this a good school district or not?" They're basing that on test scores. Well, goodness, wouldn't it be helpful for us if we had data? Well, we do have data. We have data indicating that these programs, which again, have existed for over 70 years, provide benefits that go beyond religious benefits. I was an English major at the University of Tennessee, I greatly enjoyed that time. I found to my dismay that many of the people who were supposed to be teaching literature didn't understand important parts of literature, and it's because they had no background knowledge or understanding of the Bible. This is something that has been tested, and children who are in programs where they're learning the Bible are doing better academically. That's a wonderful thing. I think we'd all be for that. I think we'd all be for that. So there's no legal impediment to this at all, and it's good for kids academically. But what else is there that is a concern? And I've heard some other concerns. One of the concerns has been about safety. I'm thankful to come from a background of serving kids. My parents started a children's home. I run a nonprofit and after-school program. We've never had a case, thank God, where anyone has been abused. I've also been a person who's taken that seriously as to finding best practices to prevent it. And background checks are not the only piece. One of the other essential pieces is understanding how this happens. Once a month, large group settings is not how grooming happens for this type of abuse. It is not a safety concern for kids to come. So what else is left? Well, we have kids who may be feeling excluded, kids who feel left out. I'd like to tell you personally that I will provide candy for any of the kids whose parents say that they can't come. I heard that brought up previously. I'm happy to provide the candy for those kids. And when they have to explain that they didn't get to go, it's something that kids should be learning within the context of our diverse society. I am teaching my kids that sometimes our choices are different from others and that that's okay, and that they can be proud of our family and our choices, and that that shouldn't be something that they are embarrassed about or that they shirk from. And I know we're talking about kids, but these are kids who also academically have a benefit. What's the benefit? If you ask any teacher and they tell you that it's not easier to work with four or ten kids than it is to work with twenty-four, they're coming from a very different educational system than I've ever encountered. You can do more with less kids. You can provide more attention. You can help them get further ahead in what they're provided in the encore classes. So this is not a legal issue. It is not an issue of safety. It is an issue where this board will have to decide whether or not to move forward with something that provides once a month or accept the fact that what's coming next is opportunities for once a week where parents will check their kids out and say, "The school didn't accommodate me, and in Tennessee, the most hostile school to the Bible has been Knox County schools." I don't think that's a position that this board wants to be in. Finally, if we're saying some kids are excluded and therefore we can't do it, it'll be really tragic for all the football teams and the cheerleaders and all the other pieces, including Safety Patrol, where some kids get to go and other kids don't. I think that's something that happens in our school system right now, and that's not a reason to vote against this program. Thank you for your time.
Please state your name and county of residence.
Hello, I'm Lauren Watkins, and I'm from Knox County. And I have a child that is actually in the program at Sturkey. And I just, I want to make this brief, and thank you for allowing me to speak, but I just wanted to speak to his experience and that it's just been a great experience so far. And I love the opportunity to be able to choose this for him. Maybe we can't choose private school necessarily, but you know, I just think it's a blessing to be able to have the opportunity to choose one hour a month to send him to this. And I, as he said earlier, am very supportive of the arts programs. We send in, we do all those things. We love our school. And I just wanted to be able to say that I appreciate the opportunity to say yes as a parent and that he is loving his experience with the program. And I had no hesitation when saying yes. So thank you. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Ashley Rickles.
Ashley Rickles, Knox County. This is a bit of a familiar issue for me. I've been in the Army National Guard for eight years. I'm a first lieutenant in the Army National Guard. And we have to devote religious time for our soldiers because of the importance of their religious freedom and what it means to them. I don't see why our children should be any different. I have two children attending Sturkey Hills, two children attending the program, one toddler and one on the way. It's important to me that all four of them will see and experience this program. This isn't a get-out-of-school for an hour a month to goof off or receive candy. This program allows my children to build a community. It allows them to praise God, to sing and worship God, and to learn God's Word. This is an hour of hope for my children. We live in a secular world with rising rates of childhood anxiety and depression. This is a tool to combat that for my children. We, as parents, are called to guide our children on the path in life. Adults and children, we're all headed somewhere. Are our children headed towards something beautiful, glorious, and something that God intended for them? Are they being diverted from that path? Dismissing this program, you're telling my children that the religious education freedom is unimportant. That's not a lesson I'll allow you to teach my children. It is my right to allow them to attend this program. Our Constitution is freedom for religion, of religion, not freedom from religion. The intention of our Constitution is to allow us to choose our religion and how we practice it, not to force us from religion or to restrict our practices. This program was created out of the desire to reach our children, teach God's Word, and to bring them closer to God. Matthew nineteen fourteen, Jesus said, "Let the children come to me and do not hinder them, for the kingdom of heaven belongs to such as these." The children attending this program will greatly benefit. The program will help aid them to become better members of society, and I don't see how this program would promote any type of bullying. My children know that not everyone's a Christian, and they are taught to be kind and show respect to anyone regardless of their religion, regardless of what they believe. I do not teach my children to mock others for their beliefs. I teach them to welcome everyone. The Sturkey Hills program is welcoming to all. It meets all of the regulations, and it's an absolute blessing for our community. Thank you.
Leslie Bryant.
My name is Leslie Bryant, and I live in Knox County. My daughter attends the Bible Release Time at Sturkey Elementary. When I first received information about this program, I was very excited because as a Christian mom, I'm always looking for opportunities where my kids can grow in their faith. My daughter is also full of excitement for this program. She looks forward to going every month, and when she comes home from school, she tells me about all that she's learned and how nice the people are at the church. The special people who run this program welcome all children and show them love and acceptance, acceptance that they may not get other places. But most of all, they are planting seeds filled with God's Word in the hearts of our upcoming generation. Ephesians six four says, "We should bring our children up in the training and instruction of the Lord." Bible Release is a great extension of the morals and Christian beliefs that I implement in my home. The law says if I choose, my children can have this religious instruction during school hours, and I see that as such an amazing gift, and I hope that you guys do too. I would like to end by reading a few lines from a letter I received from the principal of Lake City Elementary School in Anderson County. "We began Bible Release Time in September of two thousand and eighteen. Our number of students participating has grown to two hundred and twenty-three out of two hundred and sixty-four students during the past year, and the program is very popular with our students and our community. I do believe it has had a positive impact on our school. The positive impact far outweighs the loss of an hour of instruction time per month eight times a year. I strongly recommend that you consider implementing this program. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to speak."
Thank you. Chloe Bryant.
My name is Chloe Bryant, and I'm in fourth grade at Sturkey Elementary, and I go to Bible Release Time. I asked my mom and dad if I could talk to you guys because I'd like you to know a kid's side about Bible Release Time. First, we get on a bus, and a leader from the church asks us if we know our last month's Bible verse, and then we say it together. Then we learn our new memory verse. When we get to the church, people come say hello and high-five us. Then they start the music, and we sing and dance to the worship songs. This is my favorite part because me and my friends are smiling and having a good time. So then a leader tells us a Bible story, and then we pray. Then we play a game that has questions about the Bible story. After that, they give us a snack and a drink, and we head back to the school. I love going there because it's really fun and I feel safe there. I want to keep doing Bible Release Time because I want to have a good relationship with God, and I want all the kids at my school to be saved by Jesus. Thank you.
Chloe, thank you. Teresa Hookstra.
I'm Teresa Hookstra, a resident of Knox County, and thank you so much for this opportunity you've given me to speak to you today. My husband and I have raised five children in the Knox County school system, and we want to thank you for the firm foundation you gave them that helped them pursue their college degrees and the successful careers they are all enjoying today. We all know how important a firm foundation is to everything that we do, and without a firm foundation, we will fail. The house crumbles. Our children get lost in school. We have been very appreciative of the teachers here in Knox County that supported and encouraged our children to excel in the classroom. We now have six grandchildren that will be in the Knox County school system soon. In fact, one's already there. My husband and I started volunteering at the Bible Release Program in August when it was first introduced as a pilot program here in Knoxville. We both had background checks ran to be part of the program. That is a requirement of the Church of Sturkey Hills and the Elgin Foundation. We want all children that attend the program to be safe. We also attended a training meeting as part of the preparation for the start of this program. I want you to know that both my husband and I were so impressed with this program. It is very organized, it's fast-moving, and it keeps the children's attention. They have songs, prayer, a short video of the Bible lesson, and an engaging Bible teacher. And if time permits, a game is played that goes over the Bible story, and the kids really love that part. We believe that this program can be a tremendous asset to our schools here in Knox County, and that is why I wanted to speak to you today. I am one who works in the program, and I have seen firsthand the response of the children, and I believe this program can make a difference in the lives of our children, a difference for good in the classroom and a difference for good in their homes. This program shares the gospel of Jesus Christ, and the gospel is the power of God unto salvation to everyone who believes. I stand here today because I was changed on the inside out when I first heard the gospel as a child, and that is why I feel so strongly about this program. It can produce good fruit in the lives of our children. We all want our children to be moral, law-abiding citizens, and the gospel presented to our children can lead them in the right direction and help give them a firm moral foundation in which to build their lives and relationship to others. So today, I ask you to consider letting this program go countywide, and I've got grandkids that I want to be able to go to this program. So thank you very much.
Charles Van Beek.
Charles Van Beek, Knox County resident, I too. I have five grandchildren in the school system right now, so I have a stake in this. Apparently, the sponsors of this proposed board policy feel that our children are not sufficiently exposed to religious moral instruction. That is that not enough Sunday schools are teaching religious moral instruction. Not enough Sunday evening programs are teaching enough moral instruction. Not enough Wednesday evening programs are teaching enough moral instruction. Not enough parents are teaching moral instruction at home. Therefore, let's fill this terrible void by encroaching on our public schools. You know, and it's, you know, our society does have an agreed set of moral core values. And when we teach those children every single day in school, every teacher teaches them all day, every day. Those core values have been adopted by every religion that I'm familiar with, including among others honesty, respectfulness, decency. These are religious moral values, not religious indoctrination. And let me point you to Paul's Letter to the Galatians. "But the fruit of the Spirit is love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, self-control." These values are taught every single day by every teacher in our school system. Don't sell them short by pulling kids out of the classes for these additional programs. In short, I submit that there is no need for this policy. Indeed, the state does not compel you to adopt the policy. The statute is couched in terms of may, not shall. Thank goodness. Make no mistake, this tonight, if you pass this policy, is just the beginning. It'll be, there'll be motions to amend it time and time and time again. Right now, it's up here for one hour per month. Next, it'll be next one hour per week, then one hour per day. Lest you think that I'm an alarmist, the statute permits you to adopt a policy that excuses a student from school to attend a release time course in religious moral instruction for no more than one class period per school day. We know where this is going. You know it. I know it. Everyone here knows it. That's where we're going. And then we talk about one hour. When does the hour begin? Does that hour begin when they get on the church bus and end when they get off the church bus? I submit to you that the disruption to the school is more, way more than one hour. That hour should begin when the kids are excused from the classroom, that they're going to go put on coats and sweaters and mill around in the hall, go out to the courtyard, be counted before they put on the bus, and the same thing when they come back. It's going to be a whole lot more than an hour disruption to the school day. You know, and other people talk about, well, we let kids do, they go for vision tests, hearing tests, to do all these different things. That's a disruption. No. All those things, we allow those excused absences because they go to a child's ability to hear, see, not have attention distracted by illness. They're all necessary to a child's ability to learn and to fully participate in the educational process. I do submit that pulling kids out for this well more than an hour, it's going to be well more than an hour, you can bet on that, does disrupt the school. And it's much more than just disruption to a continuum of a curriculum. It's a flat-out disruption. And I suppose I'd just let you know, I go to church every Sunday, and I participate in all the programs in my church, and I participate in all community activities, feed the poor and all those things. I believe in Jesus. I believe in what He taught us, and I don't think we need to do this program at all. Thank you for your attention.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Christine Bach, and I'm a resident of Knox County. I'm speaking to you tonight wearing two hats, that of a parent and that of an educator. I'm the guardian of a graduate of Farragut High School, and I'm very proud of the education I'm the guardian of a graduate of Farragut High School and I'm very proud of the education that she received. Sometimes the only thing that got her out of bed in the morning were her band and theater classes. She struggled in some areas, but in those, she was an equal. She was part of a family. I can't even express how valuable those classes were to her. The arts were her place to fit in and to belong. After my email to several board members, the common theme I heard from those of you who are in favor of the Religious Release Program was the same. You wanted me to have a choice. I would like to remind you that I already had a choice. I had the choice to send my child to religious education classes. I had the choice to send my child to a religious school. I had the choice to enroll my child in a public school where every child is treated equally regardless of their religious affiliation, and that is the choice I made. It is not the school's choice to teach my child how to be a good person. It is not my choice, or it is not the school's job to teach my child morality. That is my job as a parent. Now I want to put on my second hat, which is that of a Knox County educator for over 20 years. I'm a music educator and I teach on average 150 students a day, or 750 a week. And over the years, I have taught over 15,000 students. I average over 50 hours of professional development and I use my own time and money to gain certifications and methodologies that most of you have never even heard of. And I'm not alone or even exceptional. I do what all of the music teachers in Knox County schools do and continue to do to give the best of me. When the county mandated common plan time for elementary teachers, I lost a fourth of my time with the students. In theory, I'm supposed to see my students 36 times a year. However, I lose four classes to PBIS reward parties. I lose one class to coupon book kickoff, another for the coupon book reward party. I lose another to the Boosterthon Fun Run. I lose another for field day. I lose, anytime there's an assembly, a field trip, a guest speaker in clement weather, I lose another class. On average, I lose at least 10 classes a year with my students. So in reality, I see most of my students 26 times per year, or just 19 and a half hours. But still, I continue to give my best. I organize concerts and shows. I spend time away from my own family making costumes and props. I even still offer extended learning enrichment programs, even though extended learning money has been cut for enrichment programs. I do that without pay. And again, I am not exceptional. I do what every other music teacher does. In some schools, our plan time is cut so that we can tutor other subject areas. In some school, we, some schools, we do more duty than any other teacher, but we continue to give our best. Let me remind you that according to the Elementary Secondary Education Act, music is a core subject. It is, it supports a sequential and comprehensive music education for all of our students. And recently, this very board signed off on a strategic plan that said it would maintain and reinforce the KCS commitment to arts education. But instead of infighting for ways for students to receive more opportunities to learn, this program proposes that students miss more. One class a month might not seem like to you, lot to you, but as one-fourth more time, I am losing with my students. I don't honestly even understand how the board is entertaining an idea that would take away the precious little time I already have with my students. Implies that we have time to waste and we don't. The idea that our time is not important is frankly an insult to all the hardworking and dedicated teachers in Knox County schools. A lot has changed in education over the last 77 years. And if Johnson University, the Elgin Foundation, and Sturkey Hills want some information on how to help us, I have lots of ideas. Look toward Wallace Memorial and Park West Baptist. They do so much for our schools. But what it all boils down to is instead of proselytizing and undermining our public education system, they kind of need to just walk the walk and show the love and service to others that we've been taught as Christians. I will give and I will continue to give my best. That is my calling and my service. As a parent and an educator, I am asking you to represent me, a voter, and others like me by voting against this release program. Instead, maybe our time would be better spent finding more ways for students to have more arts education. Thank you for listening and thank you for your time.
Amanda Bivens?
Good evening, board. My name is Amanda Bivens and I live in Knox County. In fact, I've lived in Knox County my entire life and went through the Knox County school system myself. I've been serving the Knox County schools since 2012. First as a student teacher and substitute teacher, and then as a CODI music specialist. I have a Bachelor of Music Education from Carson Newman University, a Master of Music Education from the University of Memphis, and a full CODI certification endorsed by the Organization of American CODI Educators. It has been my great honor and joy to serve the children and parents of the Farragut community as their music specialists for the past five years. Before I dive into my concerns with the proposed Religious Release Time, let me first explore what I believe all the children of Knox County deserve, according to the law and according to my own moral compass. Throughout my study at the University of Memphis, I was able to learn a bit more about the laws regarding what is guaranteed to children regarding their music education. According to the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, music and art were deemed as core academic subjects with protected time. The Knox County School Strategic Plan also states that KCS will maintain and reinforce the KCS commitment to arts education. It is my ultimate passion and conviction that only the best is good enough for a child. And children deserve a high-quality, uninterrupted music education. The Religious Release Time policy will ultimately hinder the children's right to a high-quality music education. It has been proposed that each non-affiliated religious institution that offers a program can take kids out of our classes for one hour a month. What happens if there are many options? Will they be missing more than once a month? Let's assume it is only once a month. The majority of special area teachers at the elementary level only see their students once a week. I see my students around 40 times this school year. If they miss my class once a month, that is one-fourth of the lessons I teach. Missing even one class, let alone possibly 10, puts the child hugely behind in terms of my content retention. The proposed policy states that I do not have to reteach material to those students that miss. If I do not reteach, where does that leave me? Students who are failing to master their objectives and goals according to my state standards. If I do reteach, the students who already had the lesson are at risk of becoming disengaged. Either way, students are the ones who are losing in this situation. The proposed policy also waives Knox County of liability to what may happen to students once they leave the school premises. This is hugely problematic. As we do not know exactly the safety procedures each local church will put in place to ensure students are where they should be and will be out of harm's way, like Knox County schools does. If this program is not unified, how do we know what each student is receiving the type of instruction the church claims to be giving? The answer, we don't exactly know. Because we do not know what they will be teaching, they may or may not align with the religious beliefs of every family. These teachings will not likely be affirming to families of all backgrounds, beliefs, sexual orientations, gender identities, and so on. What will happen to the children who are left behind at school, especially if they are minority religious group? There are hundreds of Christian churches in Knoxville, but very few synagogues, mosques, and temples. If we are worried about the moral character of children, it is already legal to teach about the Bible during school hours. Students also receive lessons about building strong character from our school counselors. There have been a fair share of people who tell me I'm not putting God first by standing in opposition to this proposed policy. To that, I respond that there is nothing, nothing more holy than making music with other human beings. In my music class, we learn how to see each other as human beings with feelings. We learn to treat each other with kindness and compassion with every little singing game that we play together. We learn to be peacemakers when things do not turn out the way that we always want them to. As an educator of faith, I have found my way to share the law of love and the gospel of peace. If the board feels it's absolutely necessary to offer this time, I encourage the board to make time for this before or after the school day so that children get both opportunities. Religious guidance along with the music, with music and the arts. A vote no for this policy to happen during the school day is a vote to keep the students of Knox County where they belong, in schools, receiving a high-quality arts education. Thank you for your time.
Robbie Potte?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Robbie Potte and I'm a general music educator for Knox County Schools and a resident of Knox County. As I stand here, I'm asking that our board vote no regarding the Religious Release Time policy. I'm asking a vote of no on this policy for several reasons, of which I will share a small handful as time allows. First, my concern is for our most important stakeholders involved concerning this policy, our students. When students are on our campuses across our county, all rules, regulations, and policies have been put into place, tested, and true. We are charged with their safety and well-being. Since students will be leaving our campuses, the safety of our students is out of our hands. Educators, including myself, are required to be vetted, including background checks and other processes. Will the members of the independent entities follow the same procedures? We cannot ask for this process to occur. Another concern of safety, for example, could be in regards to special medical needs or even accommodations that students may need. As the current policy states, quote, "No public funds are expended and no Knox County schools personnel are included in providing the religious instruction," end quote. Will a nurse or assistant for a child be required to attend? According to policy, the answer is no. Will the sponsoring entity assume the responsibility for these needs? Another point of safety is the mode of transportation in which our students will attend these courses. From research, Tennessee state law states that each bus used for student transportation must be inspected annually, along with other requirements, such as the age of the bus. Our state laws require and charge districts to ensure that our vehicles that transport students to and from our campuses must be safe. Will entities be required to prove the transportation they are providing is safe, even though our district could potentially ask our parents to sign a waiver of liability? Are there any cases or proven facts to show that our waivers will completely stand in court? Other safety concerns could range from requirements and procedures for the entities to provide safety drills and safety procedures, threats against another pupil, the school, or even in themselves. These are just a few of my concerns regarding student safety. My second area of concern regarding this policy centers around another important stakeholder, each school's staff members. First, the policy as written states, quote, "No student may be released from a core curriculum subject course to attend a religious religious instruction course," end quote. What is the definition of core curriculum subjects? Tennessee State Board Policy 49-6-1025, Section A, from 2016 states. Course of instruction in all public schools for kindergarten through grade eight, K-8, shall include art and music education to help each student foster creative thinking, spatial learning, discipline, craftsmanship, and intrinsic rewards of hard work, end quote. In looking at pilot programs, it has been reported that students were pulled from art in particular for release time. Will the board continue to adhere to the promise made in the 2019 through 2024 Strategic Plan, which states, quote, "We will focus on whole child development through education in the arts, physical activities, STEM and word languages?" Or will the arts be allowed to be devalued? Second, for example, concerning missed assignments, will the arts continue to be devalued even further? Suppose a student doesn't fully connect with music. They enjoy it, but are not fully vested. If an educator is presenting material and a student misses due to release time, the student is to assume the responsibility for the missed assignments. Is the educator supposed to just give written assignments for the missed material? Create a supplemental curriculum, or even work even extra hours to, to support these students who've missed regular sessions? Will the policy and pilot program, as currently interpretive, continue to allow the arts to be devalued as non-core subjects and allow for further devaluation? Do we expect arts educators to give a student a grade and simply move on? Third, will educators be required to pass out flyers for this policy and in doing so, endorse it? With, with separation of church and state being so deeply enshrined in our nation and legal system, shouldn't the obligation to advertise and obtain permission for such programs be on the entities and parents? Forcing educators to participate could be viewed by all as an endorsement, especially if teachers purposely or unwittingly do make an endorsement, all of which would propose a host of other ethical and legal issues. In closing, as a person of faith myself and one who is very active in my local congregation, I wholeheartedly oppose this policy during school. I have devoted my professional career to empowering students through music and my time with my students weekly is already limited. This policy can allow less time if carefully, not carefully crafted, raises concerns of safety, could potentially devalue the arts, and has too many unanswered or unexplored areas. Furthermore, I feel this policy is just unjust and unwarranted. To the school board, I thank you for hearing our concerns and I ask you to vote no. Thank you very much.
Daniel Herrera? One more call for Daniel Herrera. Okay, Jax Fox?
Hello, everyone. Hello, board. My name is, my name is Jax Fox and I'm a resident of Knox County. Many other people have already addressed the issues that I have with implementing this policy. Missing class, liability, the diversity of needs of students, the need for the, for the subjects as art and music, student safety, et cetera. I'm, I'm asking you for a no vote because of my personal experience. I was raised Roman Catholic in the South. I spent 10 years in Catholic school, pre-K through eighth grade. We had religion class at least once a week, mass twice a week. We opened school and closed school every day with a public prayer. I wore my uniform out and about as I was a kid and didn't have much choice in changing clothes. And I got a lot of questions. Do you worship Mary? Why do you pledge allegiance to the Pope? Are you saved? At age nine, I had to ask my dad what a papist meant because I overheard my great uncle, who's a Southern Baptist minister, being rude about my mother. One particular memorable Sunday, there were chick tracklets left on the windshield of every, of every car of anyone attending mass about the Catholic Church being the whore of Babylon. I was still Christian, but clearly not the right kind of Christian. It was uncomfortable seeing this from adults. And my peers who didn't attend my school just copied their parents. It was extremely uncomfortable. When I went to high school, which was public high school, I attended mass Sundays, holidays, which my mother pulled me out of school and would check me back in, and religious education every Sunday night. Religion became private and much more comfortable. I didn't have people asking me rude questions. This law specifically allows for currently one week, one period a week. With more programs, will you allow students to attend multiple programs? Do you only expect for one denomination of Christianity to have a program when churches split up regularly over small differences in biblical interpretation? Just make it an after-school program. It'll help provide childcare and miss most of the issues that are being discussed today. It's almost as if this whole situation is more concerned with getting a foothold in our public schools than actually impacting the children they claim they want to reach. It, it reminds me of something that I was taught. Matthew, Chapter 6, Verse 5 through 6. "And when you pray, do not be like the hypocrites, for they love to pray, standing in the synagogues and on the street corners, to be seen by others. Truly I tell you, they have received their reward in full. But when you pray, go to your room, close the door, and pray to your Father, who is unseen, when your Father, who sees what is done in secret, will reward you." Please decline to establish a program of religious studies. There is religious bullying, even of other Christians. Thank you.
Lilian Mashburn?
Thank you. I'm Lilian Mashburn, a lifelong resident of Knox County. I'm proud of it. I've attended school in Alice Bell back in, when it was a school for K-1 through 8 in the 50s. There were several religious proverbs, religious shows, assemblies. My Presbyterian mother would not allow me to attend. Sometimes, being the only child left behind, I was taunted and bullied. Sometimes, being the only child left behind, I was taunted and bullied. The fact that I was baptized as a child was fodder for fun, bullying. Big saved was not Presbyterian language. My children were in Knox County Schools. They didn't have to face these issues. They attended school with children of many religions, many races. They got along fine. There needs to be respect for children who need not to be subject to bullying if they do not conform religiously. Some years ago, I was Executive Director of the National Comforts of Christians and Jews, a religious organization to promote brotherhood and sisterhood of all person kind. Today, in retirement, I serve as the Director, as the Chair of the University of Tennessee's Board of Visitors for the Department of Religious Studies. People from all faiths study to learn and to promote understanding among all religions. If you study, you find that all religions promote and encourage the golden rule. I have not seen one that does not. There are many opportunities for Christian parents, and there are many varieties, various groups of Christian parents, to provide religious education for their children. Knoxville has changed. There are many vibrant religious communities in Knox County in addition to the many varieties of Christian communities. There are vibrant communities of Muslims, Jews, Sikh, Hindu, and Buddhists, among many others that I have not named. All religious traditions and faiths should be valued and according equal access. If such access is deemed necessary.
Lincoln Simmons?
Hello, I'm Lincoln Simmons and I am from Blount County.
Okay, we need to take a vote whether to allow him to speak. Move to allow him to speak? All in favor?
Thank you, Chairperson, Superintendent, and Knox County School Board members. I am the Director of Children's Bible Ministries, which is a U.S. and international mission agency whose headquarters are located in towns in Tennessee, which is in Blount County. Our organization uses release time, the release time Bible education, as one of our tools to minister to young people in the U.S. This past school year, from August 2018 to August of 2019, we had release time classes taking place in 164 schools, 41 counties, and 10 states with close to 20,000 students enrolled. CBM had 5,427 students in the state of Tennessee alone. I would like to encourage the board to approve the proposed release time policy. CBM desires to work alongside of the school system, not against it. In all of our organizations and programs that we run now, we have not done it outside of the realms of the school board. A policy would give the Knox County School Board input that would help the schools offer release time in a way that is advantageous to the goals of the schools and the parents of the children they serve. Schools, parents, and students benefit from release time. The National Council on Crime and Delinquency did an independent program evaluation. Their study supports the following benefits for schools. Release time education offers opportunities for programs at no taxpayer cost to the schools. Students are attending the program, and schools and teachers are free to work with other students, saving school money and reducing class size. It reinforces positive character behavior in students. It improves academics' performance. The study shown that the scores of the Oakland release time students increased after a one-year period in comprehension, spelling, and vocabulary. The study also showed that release time students outperform nonparticipants in almost every academic category. It fosters community and parent involvement in the schools. South Carolina Supreme Court Judge E.C. Burnett has become a huge advocate of release time Bible education and states the evidence is too obvious, with release time violence diminishes, relations among the kids improve, and the desire for education improves. Release time also offers great benefits to the parents as well. Not all parents can afford Christian education or have the time to invest in other religious instruction opportunities. Release time allows these parents the opportunity to send their children to a time of religious instruction. It is not for Christians only, it is open to everyone. Parents desire to see their children succeed and know that moral instruction taught at release time will have a positive effect on their children. To students, the benefits are perhaps the easiest to see. Depression, suicide rates are up because of their hopelessness. We offer them hope at release time. Anger and violence are on the rise. We teach students about love and forgiveness during release time. Sexual activity, pornography, alcohol, and drug use are on incline and are more readily available to young people today. All this leads to addiction at a younger age. We teach young people they can have freedom from sin and vices during their release time. Students are demotivated to pursue their education. We motivate them by giving them hope and a reason to strive for excellence in social, spiritual, and academic performances during release time. We use a Bible-based curriculum. In fact, last week during the release time discussion, it was brought up that people were being bullied. Release time teachers teach the opposite of this. We teach them to love one another. We teach them how to defend their beliefs in a God-awning way. It does open the door for honest conversations to be had about religious differences, but this is a good thing and a lesson that young people need to learn today. Last week, one of the advocates said that release time is a place where children feel loved and safe. I echo that statement, and not because it is a feel-good statement, that it's something that we are just hoping for. It is one that is backed by the hard work of organizations like CBM, the Elgin Foundation, school ministries, and local churches across the U.S. We do our due diligence. We perform background checks. Liability insurance is in place. CBM has a child protection plan that has been adopted and endorsed by John Ashcroft, former U.S. Attorney General, as a first-rate program. Security and safety is important when it comes to dealing with children. A question, why is release time instead of after-school programs? CBM ministers through children in a variety of different ways: summer camps, correspondence lessons which are done through mail, and also through after-school programs and release time. What we have found overwhelmingly is that release time offers parents and students the opportunity for the most children to attend religious instruction. 250 students were enrolled in after-school release time programs versus almost 20,000 enrolled in the release time classes. This tells us what is working better for the families that we serve. I want to thank you for the opportunity for considering the release time policy and appreciate the time.
Clark Step?
Thank you, Board Member Superintendent Thomas Clark Step, Knox County. I work for both the Church of Sturkey Hills and the Elgin Children's Foundation. I facilitate release time in 17 schools across four districts here in East Tennessee. I was here for the policy committee hearing, I was here for the workshop and public forum, and then here tonight, and what I've observed is really a hijacking of what release time education actually is. We have people waving a magic wand to one side with lots of hypotheticals and objections while our target is down here. It almost sounds like if you sit back here that Knox County is debating whether the county should adopt a Christian program in the schools, and we know that that's far from the truth. Every single point, whether for or against, is silenced on one point. The only point that really matters in all of this, and that point, is that parents have the right, under our state and federal law, to request that their child be released from school for one hour per week to receive religious instruction. Here's some straw man arguments that I've heard against that. All of them can be answered the same, and that is, parents ask for their kids to be released for religious instruction. What about kids left to school? That parent made a choice, that's okay. Why can't you do it after school? We do support after-school programming, but that isn't what this is. Just because you can have a program after school doesn't mean you get to take away the rights of parents to retain instructional time during the school day. What about background checks? What about curriculum? What if something bad happens when they're gone? What if someone is bullied? Again, parents have exercised their rights and asked that their children be released to a third party for religious instruction during the school day. What do people at the school think about this? I love the people at Sturkey Elementary and the other schools where I help facilitate release time classes. I know what they think about it, and it is overwhelmingly positive. I know this because I talk to them. If you would go to the school, if you talked to the faculty and staff, you'd know that. But the interest of the person raising most of these objections on the board hasn't been to find out what school personnel think, and that's why that board member hasn't been to the school or called them to ask about it. They could answer most of these objections. That being said, as much as I respect what the opinions of school personnel on the program are, this is a question that can also be answered by saying, "Parents ask for their kids to be released for religious instruction." Another argument that's getting thrown around a lot has to do with teachers' instructional time. With all due respect, as important as your class might be, when a parent asks that their son or daughter be released for religious release time once per month, what they are saying is that it's more important that their kid is instructed in the Bible for that hour during that month. And if that is frustrating or upsets someone, then let your voices be heard. But this isn't the place that those rights can be changed. Only at the Tennessee State Legislature and probably the federal level can that happen. That is where these concerns should ultimately be directed. You see Knox County isn't starting a program where they need to decide if a curriculum is acceptable or if teachers are happy about it. No, you're simply acknowledging that parents have this right, and you're allowing those who want to exercise that right to do so. All these questions sound good in theory, but they're directing everyone's attention away from what this really is. You could ask all these hypotheticals in regards to school-sponsored events, field trips, sporting events, school assemblies, anything else at the school where the school is actually held liable. In release time, the parents have acknowledged and they sign on the permission form that Knox County in no way endorses the program. They have requested their kids be released to someone else's care, and the school must honor that. Although all of these points that have been argued can be answered with, "Parents ask for their kids to be released for religious instruction," I'll address some of the other objections as well. Sturkey is just one small school, and the schools where I facilitate release time, 10 of them, are larger than Sturkey Elementary. How about, that might work in rural areas, but Knox County is larger and more diverse. Their release time education programs in places much larger and more diverse, a few, Columbus, Ohio, Los Angeles, California, and Portland, Oregon. What about separation of church and state? Again, Freedom from Religion on their own website acknowledges the legality of release time. When we start at a new school, I go into a training at the host site. The foundation mandates that every worker has a sufficient background check. We teach protocol on reporting if there's belief that a child has been physically abused. And Elgin is on the front lines, as many of you know, fighting against child abuse. We teach a two-adult rule. No one adult can be alone with a kid at a time, and we have a plan in place for discipline that we share. I'd be happy to let you see one of our training manuals that illustrates all of this. I share all of this just so you know that we are running a high-quality program, but what if someone's not? What if someone's not running a high-quality program and they want to do this? The answer? Parents have asked for their kids to be released for religious instruction. Finally, when groups in here think that they're opposing the Church of Sturkey Hills or the Elgin Children's Foundation with the things they're saying, they're wrong. We're just facilitating the wishes of parents and making it easy for them to access their rights. The people you're really opposing is the parents. You're opposing Lauren, you're opposing Ashley, Colin, who talked last week, Leslie, and all the other parents at the school who want their kids to be instructed in the Bible. And what about the parents who don't want this? They get to make a choice for their kids not to participate. That's the beauty of this. We all have freedom to exercise our rights and we have a choice. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and God bless each of you.
Hello, my name is Michael Ailiff. I am a resident of Anderson County.
Would the board like to allow Mr. Ailiff to speak? Is there a second? Could we take a vote? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
I won't talk quite as fast as some of the other people. And I can do it all in less than five minutes. The first word I'll throw out is freedom. The hat that I wear represents freedom. I say it quite often. The beauty of this flag is the freedom that we all have, the freedom to come in, voice our opinion, the freedom to choose, to choose to come here to speak or to choose not to. Similar to everyone here, a freedom to choose whether or not you want to participate in a religious activity or not, a freedom to believe in God or not. And that freedom, I believe that the vote will probably go yes. My wife is a special education master degree school teacher. She leans on me about starting Wednesday night, tonight, as her counselor because of the condition of the schoolchildren that she educates breaks her heart. She deals with kids that have emotional disabilities, physical disabilities. She deals with kids that come to school and have not had breakfast. They probably eat free lunch, and they may or may not eat when they go home because they're being raised by an uncle or aunt, another family member, because there's so much dysfunction in the family at the home. I think the school system has a tough enough job teaching and educating the children to become solid citizens in life. I believe that the separation between the church and the state is just that, it's a right. Everyone has the freedom to choose. People can choose if they want to go to church and have their kids instructed there, or they can choose to do it at home, where I feel like it's probably one of the best places, but for some children, they may not get that chance. So, I do feel like the vote will probably go in favor. So, I'll bring up another word, discrimination. You know, when you deal with kids that have disabilities, whether it's physical or emotional, I'm not sure. I'm sure that the foundation and even the Sturkey Hill School and Church is aware of those disabilities. I just don't know if, from my count, there seems to be 90 schools in the Knox County school system, give or take. There's 360 different church denominations in Knox County. I'm not sure how many are going to petition to be a part of this program within their jurisdiction of the school. It just sounds to me like liability. I say that word only to say that the school system seems to think that they'll wash their hands of liability based on a consent form signed by the parents. I'm not a lawyer. I am a doctorate in neology, which means I'm simply a praying man and a man of faith. I follow a doctrine called the Way because he said he was the Way and he was the Truth. One thing that will probably be disagreed on in many of these settings is, this is what I believe and this is what you believe. So, in closing, I throw that last word out for liability and say oversight. I think that the organizations that come into the school are the chain of custody of release of the children. There needs to be a substantial insurance policy, and for two hours today, I called 15 different insurance agents that insure churches. The first question they asked me was, was I of a Catholic denomination? The reason for that is they said they would not insure at any level of money a Catholic Church. So, in closing, I just say be cautious in your vote because the liability will ultimately lie at the school board.
Thank you. Dave Johnson?
Good evening. My name is Dave Johnson. I'm the Director of Children's Bible Ministries of East Tennessee. We partner with Elgin. Our residence is out here in Holston Hills. By the way, I saw your list of how many speakers we have tonight, and we're coming down to the end now. So, we're down the homestretch. I thank you for your patience. I want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and thank you for the job that you do in your sincere hearts to make Knox County Schools the best that they can be. Many of you may not realize, in the late 1990s, our ministry first offered release time to Knox County. Alan Morgan was superintendent then. But admittedly, those times were different, and even though there was a lot of public support, Knox County Board members at that time just weren't ready. There was no Tennessee Code to back them up, and only two small counties in East Tennessee had release time programs, and after some discussion, the board chose not to bring it up for a vote. I was disappointed, along with many other Knox County residents, but one thing I've always learned, when life gives you lemons, you make lemonade. And so, I began to commute to our Union County release time program to help their first driving a bus and then teaching, and soon we began to expand. And soon we began to expand. Uh, Claiborne, Claiborne County voted to adopt release time. Uh, Hancock County followed and soon the number of children had, had topped the 2,000 enrollment mark. Over the years since then, one by one, other school boards have seen the value of release time. And at last count, I believe there are 11, uh, counties in Tennessee, in East Tennessee, uh, and in partnership with Elgin and CBM have adopted release time policies. Over the years, I have seen release time work seamlessly and smoothly. Let me address a few, a few concerns that might be helpful to you as a board. One concern that I heard was transportation and getting kids in and out of school. That would take more than one hour. The last thing we want is unhappy teachers because the children's aren't back in their classrooms when promised. We program in our transportation time into every class time and to stay within the hour. We just, we make it work. There was a concern about other face wanting equal access, causing too many interruptions. The simple solution is a policy, uh, that release time for everyone is the same day and the same time. Children simply get on the bus that takes them to the program chosen by their parent. Another concern last, uh, week I heard was time out of class. Can I just say that from my personal experience, that teachers, when they see how release time creates better students for them overwhelmingly support this? In fact, I can't even tell you the number of times that teachers, as their children are going out the door of the school to get on the bus, have thanked me personally for what we do. Let me add that every school board that has looked at release time has had many of the same questions and concerns that you have tonight, including all the hypotheticals. But after careful consideration and scrutiny, they have voted overwhelmingly in Tennessee to approve it. I close with something I wrote about that happened just three weeks ago today in a release time class. It was a brand-new release time class in Green County, uh, that we serve. Camp Creek is a small farmland school located at the base of the Appalachians and it was scheduled to have its first-ever Bible Release Time Class that day. Soon after a quick setup, we arrived at the office to greet a small group of students lining up in the hall, excited to find out what this new opportunity at their school was all about. One young lady on our list wasn't in line. So, one of the other children left to go find her. She was in the gym. A moment later, when they returned, we learned why she hadn't come. Even though her mom had signed for her permission, her permission form for her to go, she didn't think going to learn about the Bible would be as much fun as being in the gym. I urged her to give it a try and she reluctantly got in line. Only a few minutes later, the group was settled in our meeting room and after some introductions and preliminaries, it was time for our story of the day. The Old Testament story of Joseph, the coat of many colorists, 11 brothers who hated him and sold him into slavery, and Potiphar's wife who lied about Joseph to her husband. Potiphar is furious and his wrath is about to come down on Joseph when our episode comes to an abrupt halt. Guess what, everyone? We're out of time. You'll have to come back next month to find out what happens to Joseph. A loud sigh bellows out from the children who are totally into the drama and they reluctantly get back up out of their seats to go back to school. And as we began our walk back, a little girl who didn't want to miss her gym time came to me. This was fun. I'm coming back next time. And then her friend chimed in, "I can't wait to find out what happened to Joseph. I don't have a Bible, but my brother does. I'm going to sneak into his room and get his Bible so I can find out." Just want to say thank you for considering this and appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, um, thank you for a chance to speak to you. Lance McCold, Knox County. Um, I've been watching this and, this week and last week, and I see lots of good people on both sides of this issue. Maybe there's more than two sides to it. One thing I think is, is quite clear is that, um, whether people are for or against, uh, adopting this policy, they seem to be universally people of faith. Um, I, I have to say I was a little offended that the, um, some of the speakers were saying that the board, if the board chose, chose not to adopt this policy, that it would mean that they were indifferent to religion or that they were opposing parents. Um, that's, um, that's not, that's not the way we should be treating each other. It actually seems to me to really lend credence to the concerns people have about bullying because it sounds to me like a form of bullying. Um, I, I, I do say that I am not persuaded, I, I can certainly see the, the advantages to doing this thing during school, but I'm not persuaded that it needs to be done during, during school. You know, I know there, it sounds like a great program, you know, I'm all for people having these kind of programs for kids, but do it after school, do it before school. Why do we have to interrupt the schools? Um, yeah, it's, it's clear, we heard reports that they get more students this way, but just because it's easier for you doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. Um, I, I do want to, I do want to bring your attention to something that, that's concerned me a lot, is I've thought about this policy. I think that if we adopt this policy, that the policy itself should include some really good controls on the, on how this affects our schools during the school day. It's easy for me to imagine circumstances where if the bus doesn't get back on time, um, if the kids are wound up and not ready to get back into class at next time, even though they're within the, the allotted hour or, or class period, um, that could be very disruptive beyond just the, the time it takes the staff to gather up kids and bring them and take them back in. Um, I, I think that, uh, this seems to me, the logistics of this seem to be a lot more complicated than they've been presented. I can hardly believe that the schools will check out, let their kids be turned out without actually noting which ones are leaving and noting which ones come back to make sure we haven't lost some in the process. So, if, if, uh, you choose to pursue this policy, I would urge you to make sure that you consider all the, the, the things that can go wrong and that you give the principal, at least, the power to disassociate with programs, entities who choose to bring things that, that actually don't follow the rules that he or she sets out.
Hello. I'm Angela Allred with the, with Knox County. I'm a citizen. Um, I worked for eight years at the Knoxville Police Department and helped acquire the grant that built the Family Justice Center. I'm just saying that as a forward to some of the things I'm going to say so you know where my background is in that. Um, I would like to start by asking one thing. If the teachers are against this, why are we even talking about it anymore? Have we really just stopped caring about their opinions? It's like they're talking into the void and some of you are just looking around like, Groups like this, like the Elgin Foundation and even the Children's Satanic Ministry will come and go, but teachers are the absolute bedrock of our society. Please listen to the teachers. They do not want this policy to pass. Please listen to them. Someone might well say, that, someone, um, might say, "Well, the parents' opinions should also matter," and I agree. Teachers, parents, and students should be the largest consideration here. One, one of the board members for the policy said that parents should have the right to choose how and where their children are educated. I agree. Couldn't agree more, actually. That is their right to educate their child as they choose. The thing is, parents have that right now. They have that today. They can take them out of school all or part of the day and it's my understanding that it won't even be counted against the student's attendance record if they only miss a class or two. But let's say the parent either doesn't have time, right, which is some people's argument, or, or simply doesn't want to take the time, either one, to take their child out of the school. I don't think that suddenly means that the school board should pass a bad policy in order to make it easier for that parent to educate the child in a certain way. One thing does not equal the other. Passing a terrible policy is not the solution to help a parent teach their child about the Bible or about Satan, either one. Passing a terrible policy is simply passing a terrible policy. Um, I want to say, I think this policy is dishonest and distasteful and bear speed it up. It's dishonest because there is no way for this program to be free of cost as required by the Tennessee law. If you pass the policy, you're saying in essence it won't cost taxpayer money. That is patently impossible. Teachers and aides will be spending time in class to separate the students. Aides will be likely used to move students place to place. The list goes on. Translation services, special education services, nursing services, attendance records. We literally cannot even think of all the ways that we know this is going to cost money, but we know it will. So, that is dishonest to assert this program won't cost taxpayer money. Tasteful is distasteful. As a daughter of an elementary school teacher and friend of many other teachers, I find it very distasteful that the opinions of teachers themselves are being discarded to appease one Christian group or Satanic ministry group. It doesn't matter. That's, it's not appropriate. And why would the board approve a policy for the children to be educated by people who are not certified to teach in the first place? The Tennessee law should never have been written and we should not offer tacit or direct approval by passing this policy. Children should be taught by certified teachers, not people who know how to read the Bible. It is distasteful because it confines the separation of church and state. And it's inappropriate to me, weird, and a bit creepy. We tell children not to talk to strangers, but we're about to let them get in a van Policy both distasteful and dishonest. I just want to take a moment and help everyone really understand that you're really making a mistake if you pass this policy and here is why. I think it's going to backfire. I think if your goal is to help children learn the Bible or, I guess I'm not really sure exactly the goal, you're actually just opening the door for any stranger, any stranger to set up a religion. Um, I asked the leader of the Satanic Children's Ministry how long it took him to set up that found, that religion? 15 minutes. Okay? And, and I'm not saying the Elgin Foundation isn't fantastic, but you all encouraging this and opening this door is leading the way to open the door for any person that wants to start a religion in 15 minutes to apply. And if you turn them down, you're gonna be in a, in a lawsuit situation. Okay? We don't really know, so we don't, you don't have the time and the energy to know what they're doing. Ah, I'm out. It's always I'm against it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you choose wisely.
So, my name is Ginger Treason. I live in Knox County. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and the rest of the board for allowing me this opportunity to share once again. Um, to me, this is a parental rights issue. It's under the law, federal and state. And those who disagree with this release time, it's a matter for a state legislature, not this board. Parents have an opportunity to opt in or out of this policy and, uh, we're asking you to represent us tonight, uh, not necessarily what teachers or administrators want, but your constituents, me the parent, or the ones who voted for you. So, children are precious. There are rewards, there are blessings. There's many scriptures that talk about how they are a reward and a blessing to us. And, um, I know that it's pretty common for government bodies to have proclamations, resolutions, and things like that. And so, to clarify what these things are, a resolution is a firm decision to do or not to do something. A proclamation is a public or official announcement, especially one dealing with a matter of great importance. But a decree, a decree is an official order issued, issued by a legal authority. Parents are the legal authority of our children and this is a parental rights issue. So, tonight, I'm really feeling underrepresented. I know that, I think that we have four people who are supporting this policy and I really appreciate that and I appreciate that. So, uh, tonight, I felt like I should do a parental decree for our Knox County on behalf of parents. And, uh, so today, on December the 11th, 2019, the parents of Knox County decree that we welcome Jesus Christ into our schools. We say, "Let every gate, door, and window be open to the gospel of Jesus Christ." We agree with and welcome God's plan to bless and give our children a hope and a future to prosper them and not to harm them. We say that every evil plan against all administrators, staff, and children be stopped and thwarted by the blood of Jesus. We welcome revival in every school. In Jesus' name, we pray that peace, hope, love, and joy bestowed on our children and that every child would excel academically, emotionally, mentally, physically, and yes, even spiritually, because we know Matthew 16, 26. For what is it a man profited if he gained the whole world and lose his own soul? Let God arise and his enemies be scattered. In Jesus' name, I pray. Bless you.
I am Angel Jones. I live in Knox County. I am coming to you to ask you to please vote down the Bible Release Time Policy. I've heard many reasons against and some for, and I'd like to go over some of these. Children go to public school to receive an education. They are not there for their eternal salvation. Churches for that. Growing up in church, I know many churches have church fans that pick up children that go to their homes, take them to church, and when service is over, they take them back to their home. Why can't this be an after-school program? If parents deem extracurricular activities to be more important than going to church on Sundays or Wednesdays or whatever their services are, then that is on the parents and that shows where their priorities lie. I kept hearing about how it is inclusive and open to all and how it is, however, it is only inclusive to those who believe the same or who want to convert. I have two goals in my life. One is to be a good human and the second is to raise good humans. If I do anything past that, it is just extra and just more amazing. I have a kindergartner and a second grader that attends Sterkey Elementary. My children are kind, thoughtful, creative, goofy, amazing students, empathetic, passionate, curious, and I am honored to be their mom. And yes, they have bad days, like everybody does. And other kids who have a lack of belief or believe differently are also amazing kids and they are good kids too. After reading the lessons that I have from the Elgin Foundation, it teaches children that attend the Bible Release Time that these things are not true about our children. This is an opportunity to show that no religion is favored in Knox County. From what I have learned about the Bible Release Time Law, it was made by Christians, legalized by Christians, and only utilized by Christians because they are the only ones with programs for this law. And right now, it is only being pushed into policy by people who are Christian. Legality does not equal ethical and I'm sure history can show that legality does not equal If any other religion had pushed for this law or pushed for this policy, it would not have gone through. As a veteran and as a widow to a veteran, I know what I signed up for. I know what we fought to protect. A person, and as a person who signed up to fight against injustices, I am fighting against this policy. Since last week, I spoke out about the discrimination I faced from my kindergartner's teacher. And recently, a friend of mine reached out and said that a teacher had sent home, they're a middle school student in Knox County, and his teacher sent home an essay asking if God existed and that was the topic. The student wrote about how children should research multiple religions before choosing and how they shouldn't be asked the question before they understand the importance of it. The teacher wrote a note asking if the student knew. The teacher wrote a note asking if the student knew right from wrong, and if so, then they can answer the question. That implies the right answer is yes, and that God does exist, and that is right. This isn't okay. We've heard from teachers, you're hearing from parents. There are many of us that do not want this. There are many people who are afraid of repercussions happening for speaking out. My children have faced this already. Many other parents are starting to face this, and other children are facing this, and this is a problem. So I'm asking you to please vote down this policy, and I appreciate the time that you allowed me to have. Thank you.
Page Public Forum on the release policy.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Do we have discussion on this topic?
May I suggest we take a brief recess before we-
Well, we have a motion on the floor, so that means we can't. Is that correct?
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Hill and Second by Ms. Babb.
Yeah. We will take a recess as soon as possible. But we do have a motion on the floor. That means we have to forge ahead, so. Oh, we can? Okay. Okay. We can actually vote to take a recess? Someone would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to take a recess.
We need to vote to table the motion.
I vote to table the motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. By motion by Ms. Babb, second by Ms. Satterfield. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll take a ten-minute recess.
March is a pleasure.
What happens if I don't vote?
Yeah, they have fun soon. Yeah, they do.
It's like, what is it now?
It's over.
Yeah. You know.
Because you're not flexible to August. You put your position. You have to go pick this up from the courthouse.
You guide.
From the courthouse.
Yeah.
If someone would want to make a motion to bring the table item back on to the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to bring the table item back to the floor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second motion by Ms. Babb, second by Ms. Hill. Do we have discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? You do have a discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and so now, we will go back to the discussion on Policy J-171. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Kelly?
Is this, okay, there we go. So, last week, I wanted, I told you all about a survey that I had created, and I wanted to kind of show a little bit of the results from this. I didn't necessarily want to speak personally because I'm just as conflicted as anyone else. I'm the son of a Baptist pastor, as well as a participant in the music education. I've been a band student for the past seven years. So I kind of sit on both sides of the fence. So what I wanted to do is provide a little bit of insight from students within our county. And that being said, we have forty-two responses from the sixteen different high schools in Knox County. I know that right now, this is targeted at the elementary school, but with such a policy, it opens the door for future endeavors into the middle school and high school areas within the Knox County school system. So I just wanted to give a little bit of insight into that. So, out of the, every school's representatives were sent the opportunity to fill out the survey. We got responses back from ten out of the sixteen schools, including Powell, Karnes, Bearden, Gibbs, Harden Valley Academy, the LNN STEM Academy, South Doyle, Fulton, Farragut, and Halls. Out of the forty-two responses, seventeen were in favor, twenty-four were opposed, and one had no opinion. And from that, I would like to read one, like I said, the survey was just as divisive as any other discussion that we've had. And so, I wanted to read one prevalent point made by each of the sides. So, one senior from South Doyle says, "I think this policy would allow many students to be able to have time to focus on religion. As a high school senior, I have realized I am always so caught up in doing homework, studying, and working. This leaves me very little time to actually be able to work on my relationship with God and build up my faith. I personally think this would be an amazing opportunity." On the other hand, a senior from Karnes writes, "This policy should not pass due to the overall uncertainty and potential for failure. Speaking as a student, I can vouch that the freedom to take part in this activity will only be abused and misrepresented. This leads to a loss in already limited class time and overall fails to support the greater good of education. If you want your child engaged in religion at school, then public school isn't the right choice for you." And those are just two of the most prevalent arguments. If you'd like to see the rest of them, you all have copies of those, and if you have trouble finding them, I can help you. I'm sorry about the faulty link that I sent out earlier today, but I just wanted to let you all know that.
Okay, thank you. Another discussion, Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been asked to scoot closer to the microphone.
Please, thank you.
It's odd that I'm having trouble being heard, because that's never was a complaint in the classroom. First, I'd like to, I'll apologize, this is going to be somewhat disjunct, but I'm, I just have very brief comments on each of these, and I'll move along. First, the board member raising the most objections, I assume is me. And the way I got those objections was directly from staff and parents at Sturkey Elementary School regarding the pilot program. Had I not been involved with those folks, I would not have known many of these things. While this board has been hearing from many people since about the beginning of November, I've been hearing these objections since August, and have been having discussions with our staff since August, and it has been pretty much continual. So, these are not objections that I just sat down and went through the policy and found every little thing I could think of. These are things that I have been asked over and over and over. These are concerns that people in our communities have. By not allowing the pilot to be completed and by not communicating fully with our staff and our community, we have failed to explain what it is that we are actually considering here today. We have not allowed the consideration of this policy to have a firm foundation that one of our speakers- to have a firm foundation that one of our speakers said is required of everything. Of the hundred sixty-five emails I've responded to so far, just the ones from November to now, only forty-six have been in favor of release time. And I know you're going to be shocked, but I have a spreadsheet. So as I went through and looked at the spread... I'm not kidding. So, yeah, they know I'm not kidding. So as I went through and looked at the spreadsheet, I looked at a lot of different things. And something that struck me is that of those who are in favor, almost... almost all of them, and I would say off the top of my head, less than... less than five would not fit this. Each one of them very specifically was in support of the program. They were not talking to us about the policy. It was about the program. The program is not what we're voting on. And I think that is where we have failed in our communication with the public and with our staff, is that there is a misunderstanding that what we are supporting or not supporting is this program. We are not here to say whether we support religion. We are not here to say whether we support this program. The program shouldn't be our consideration at all. What we should be considering is just the policy. When I look at the emails that I have in opposition, they overwhelmingly talk about the policy and how the policy will negatively impact. Because overwhelmingly, the emails that are in opposition are not opposed to the idea. They are not opposed to the program. One gentleman emailed in favor of the program. When I explained that we are looking at a policy and what that policy was, he came back and said, "Oh, thank you for explaining that. Well, I would definitely support that after school." So when people really look at the difference between the program and the policy, sometimes it changes very much. Because the program isn't at all what we're supposed to be looking at. Over time, this board and individuals, we have repeatedly lamented that it's ridiculous for schools to be blamed for the ills of society. And we have said that it is equally ridiculous to expect schools to solve the ills of society. And when we are looking at things that should be taking place in so many other places in society, we can only cram so much into a day. And we need to very carefully consider what we are willing to give up. I'd like to remind us that when we first considered this policy, the consensus in the room was that this was not a good idea. There was no strong support. We all were very willing to put it away and say, "This doesn't look good to us." Because at that point, we weren't looking at the program. We were looking at the policy. And I hope we will really carefully think about that. The reason I did not attend any of the Bible release time programs is because that's not what I'm supposed to be looking at. I'm supposed to be looking at the logistics of how it's working. Did I talk to the teachers in those classes? Absolutely. A lot. They have texted, they've called, sometimes in the middle of the night. And that's perfectly fine with me because they need a lot of support because they feel like they don't get... they're not getting it. They didn't have an opportunity to opt in. They didn't have an opportunity to plan for it. They were told, "Here's what's going to happen." And it's my understanding that more recently, they've been told, "Well, it's just up to the board. Whatever happens, happens." I've asked them to continue contacting us, to talk to us about what's really happening in their classrooms, because that's the part we're supposed to be looking at. If we're going out and looking at the program, we are not seeing the part that we're supposed to be looking at, which is the logistics in that classroom and how it's impacting the students and the school. That's the part we're supposed to be looking at. Knox County students deserve to have us working for the improvement of public education, not for partisan purposes or biblical purposes or any other purposes. When... when... When we put our hand on a Bible and took an oath, our oath to God to uphold our duties and the constitutions of the state and the country, when we took that oath, our oath was not to what was written in the Bible. The oath was to God to manage the education of our public school students. And I think that's really important for us to think about, that yes, we all took that oath, and yes, we all made a promise to God. This is a quote from one of the emails that I have, "To please maintain the purpose of the school day of educating children using the state-mandated curriculum. The idea that students would miss class time in exchange for release time fundamentally threatens the rights of children to receive a holistic education separate from religious indoctrination." I'd also like to point out that we keep talking about an hour, but it's not really an hour in our elementary schools. An hour is the absolute maximum that the... that the law will allow. It also says no more than a class period. And the class periods they've been leaving should be forty- and forty-five-minute class periods. So the pilot program has gone far beyond that by taking an entire hour and has bled over into other classes. So I wonder if we have a reasonable expectation of that continuing or if the law is actually going to be met. The idea that it's easier to work with four than with twenty-four comes from a serious lack of understanding the instruction and the pedagogy that is specific to the arts. We have talked a lot about legislators not understanding our curriculum, legislators not understanding what goes on in the classroom, and all these people making decisions who don't understand. And we have had arts teachers for weeks coming and telling us that we are not paying attention to the needs of the students in their classrooms. If I'm looking at four students or twenty-four students, and I'm trying to put on a play with multiple parts, it's very difficult with four students. If we are learning to square dance, it's very difficult with four students. If we are singing partner songs or even four-part harmony, you think, "Well, four people, four-part harmony, not in elementary school." They need multiple voices. They need large classes. I'd like you to think about the last time you heard a sixth-grade band concert, and now imagine that with four students on random instruments. Reducing class size, we think that's a great thing. Well, it's not a great thing if you're in a performance class. Reducing class size in a performance class absolutely ensures failure of that class, not for the students who are missing, but for every student in that class. There was a reference to the student who was left at school, and that parent made that choice, so that's okay. That parent didn't make that choice. The only choice that parent made was for that child to attend our public schools. The choice for that student to be left behind was some other parent's choice. And if we are allowing some parents to make choices for others or that impact others, that's a problem. Our arts curriculum, I know you have an email from Sarah Cummings, who is one of our fabulous music teachers. And she has pointed out to us that the national standards for music consider ninety minutes a week to be a basic music instruction. Our students are not getting ninety minutes a week. Our students are not getting the most basic instruction in our arts classes. Our music classes run forty to forty-five minutes generally. There are still, I believe, a very few somewhere who say they are getting fifty-five. They meet anywhere from every fourth day to every eighth day. And I believe there are some who meet even more rarely than that. But of the emails we have, they are meeting somewhere in there. Many of them meet every fifth or sixth day for forty to forty-five minutes. So right now, their class time is half, or sometimes less, than the most basic instructional expectations. And we are talking about potentially taking away another third of that. Like the speaker who asked why we're even discussing this, I don't understand why we're discussing this. I don't understand why we are discussing taking away instruction if we are really supporting public school students. Thank you.
Ms. Satterfield?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. This has been a very, very long process, and we've been contacted by many people. I would like to just acknowledge Tim for the respect that he's shown me in our conversations that we have. But I also want to bring up the point that today, I received a very disturbing email from someone from the foundation. And it really troubled me that that was the tone that was shared for something that is supposed to be... that's being shared. And while my decision was made way before this, it really brought major red flags to me that that is the motive behind it. And it reminded me of a lot of times where, you know, in history, where missionaries come into countries and just take over. And so it really... I'm really troubled by the attitudes that some people that represent the... for it. And these are the students... these are the people that will be with our children. So at the end of the day, I'm voting no because I believe in supporting our educators and our... and our kids in our schools versus souls that we're not responsible for saving at this moment.
Any other comments, Ms. Hill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The really difficult part about this is that... Ms. Owen, I agree probably with ninety-five percent of everything you said. Absolutely. And... and especially your point that it's not about a specific program, that that isn't what we should be looking at. And I couldn't agree more with those comments, too. One thing that strikes me about this, and that I... I know I sound like an open record, but, you know, when you have state law that supports Bible release time, and then you have a Supreme Court decision that supports Bible release time. And what's really been interesting about this is unlike the TVA situation that we're involved in, where there are many, many different attorneys with many different opinions on this, and certainly I'm not a legal scholar, but I have talked to several, several attorneys these last few weeks about this very thing. And I have not had one tell me, including our own law director, that... that if we... if we are... if we are sued because we do not allow this, that we're going to win. Because we're not. We are a policy-making board. We are not a law-making board. The law has been made. If we don't like the law, there are avenues to work on changing the law. But we... but we cannot change the law with putting a policy in place that... because we might not like the law. And that, in fact, is the law, too. So having said all that, one speaker said that we... not that we shall, but that we may develop policy. I took notes last week of all the speakers that came and really did have several takeaways about things that we could add to the policy if it were to pass that might tighten the program up a little bit, the Bible release program. I definitely heard the comments about background checks from last week to this week, that that has, in fact, been added to a requirement in the policy. I heard about the liability issues. And even though there was a clause in there, that wording has been strengthened also about other entities having proof of liability. And I also heard comments about what will happen if many schools or organizations step up and want to begin these programs. And also added to the policy was that every program, if there happened to be more than one, will be given the same hour on the same... the same day of every month so that we will not encounter a situation where we've got multiple programs and multiple time slots that we're trying to accommodate. You know, our policy says, "Once a month." You know, that's not what the law says. So we already are... are facing an issue where... where our... the policy, even when we're talking about written... passing, may be challenged anyway. But that might be a more workable issue than flat-out denying it. So I say all that to say, I don't disagree with anything that our teachers have said. I don't think it's the best-case scenario. Students losing time out of the classroom? I mean, I honestly don't. And this has nothing to do with whether I support the foundation or not, or even support the law or not. But, folks, it is the law. We have been given an opportunity by developing a policy to do what we can as a board, to put some parameters around this that hopefully those that meet all the other qualifications that the law has laid out satisfy will be respectful of what we have tried to do. That is why I think doing due diligence is so important in this. You don't have to like the policy. But the policy, in fact, does support the law. And I urge this board, while we have the chance to offer some direction and tighten up some parameters, that we do this while we can. We're going to really, I think, look back and reflect wishing we had done this when we had the chance, before it totally gets away from us. I do also very strongly support parental rights. And that's another issue that has been mentioned over and over. No one is telling anyone that they have to participate in this program. It is a parent's right to choose. If you don't want to go, you don't go. If you want to go, it's there, and it's an option because the law says that it can be. But in the end, it still remains the choice of the parent. So please, if any of you are on the fence about this, consider how we can move forward together with this partnering, for lack of a better word. Because whether we pass this policy or not, these programs will move forward. So to not pass a policy is not going to accomplish stopping these entities, whether you agree with them or not. you agree with them or not. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to call for the question. We, we all know how we're going to vote. We've listened to all the arguments, and I don't believe that there's any need to go, go round and round here. I believe, Mr. Dupler, when the questions call for, does it not require an immediate vote?
Mr. Dupler?
Thank you. So, I mean, Mr. McMillan, in this case, when you call for the question, I mean, so what you're asking, that requires two votes. I mean, one, for the, for the board to go ahead and say, okay, let's call for the question, and if that is successful, then yes, you would go ahead and vote on the motion.
You have to vote, the board has to vote on it? And I, under the, the operations I've seen, when somebody called for it, you went immediately and voted?
Well, I mean, that's the way the board may have done it in the past, but I mean, I know according to Roberts, I mean, if everybody hasn't had a chance to speak, and I know some have, some haven't tonight, then, I mean, I mean, once everybody has a chance to speak, at least once, then, then, I mean, you're, you're correct. But in, in this particular situation, the board would have to vote to actually call for the question.
Okay.
Okay. Would, would anyone want to second that?
Second.
Okay. And, okay, so, we're voting whether or not to call for the question. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have seven voted for and two opposed, is that correct? So, that means we're calling for, we're, we're now voting, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, let's do a roll call vote to whether or not we are taking the, whether we're not, I'm sorry, whether we are calling for the question or not. So, we can have discussion on?
I mean, I got something to say.
Okay, we can have discussion.
Well, I'm going to say, anyway, I strongly disagree with cutting a board member off who has not had a chance to voice their opinion about something on the floor.
Yeah, we still have several lights on, so I think that a lot of people would like to speak.
Well, did you not take a vote?
We're going to take, we're going to take, we're going to, we've been directed-
Take a vote, and you said it was seven to two.
We've been directed to take a roll call vote, so, Ms. Chris, so, Ms.?
Mr. McMillan, I think, from what I heard, I, I mean, it sounded like it was seven to two against the call for the question, so I wanted to make sure that that's correct.
Whatever y'all want to do.
Ms. Christie?
We are, a yes vote will be for stopping discussion and calling for the question.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Bowns?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
No.
Ms. Bab?
No.
Mr. Norman?
Where am I standing? No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Satterfield?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
No.
That's three yes votes, votes and six no, so the motion fails. Okay, so we'll continue with our discussion, and just try to keep your comments brief. We've talked about this several times, so I think Ms. Bab was next, is that correct? Go ahead, Ms. Bab.
And I'll be very brief. I'm just trying to get some clarification over what Ms. Hill was saying, and I think this is from Mr. Dupler. My understanding and interpretation from the law was that parents, by state law, have the right to check their parents out, but it takes a policy to do it organized through the schools. Am I misunderstanding something about that? I mean, if, if we don't pass this policy, can the program come in and get the principal to pass out stuff, and the principal has to organize everything and do all of that, even without this policy? I guess that's where I'm a little confused.
Thank you, Ms. Bab. So, it can be a little confusing, but, but I would say that, that, that I agree with the speakers tonight, and I agree with apparently the majority of the attorneys, that, that this policy follows the law. I mean, and, and state law says that, that this program can exist. But that, but that state law also says that the local Board of Education may adopt a policy. So, that is, that's not a shall, so it's not a, it's not a command or a requirement, but it, but it, but it says may. So, there's, so, so the Board of Education has a choice. And, and I think what happened last week was, there was, there were some questions about whether or not a group can, a third-party entity can go and have some type of release time course on its own. That's possible, but, but obviously, that's going to be a lot more difficult without going through a policy such as this, again, which is legal, but, but you have to have this policy to have that, that cooperation from the school and have that time slot, whether it's once, once a month, or once a week, or once a day, as, as the current law allows.
And, and just to follow up on that, I mean, I, I'm not denying that the law says parents have this right, and so under that law, but this board alone has already disagreed a lot with some laws that have been passed, and so just because a law is out there, doesn't mean I agree with the law, but I will follow it. So, you know, I, so be it. If these parents, on their own, want to go out and take their child out, I just personally have a problem with our, our policy pretty much endorsing this to happen.
Okay, Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, Ms. Owen really put, clarified the issue in terms of policy and program, and how we've spent a lot of time on, on programs, and we've, we've all agreed, especially those of us that have been and seen it, what a, what a great program it is. But the, the policy aspect, and, and I'm not one to run up against the Supreme Court or anything, but the policy is not essential, as we know, for this program to exist and to actually take place. So, because of the issues, all of the other issues, and I'm still stuck on the kid that's left behind, all of these issues that, that, that have been discussed over and over, it's my opinion that, that we should not develop a policy and sort of adhere to what was, what was wrestled with 20-something years ago. So, that's my.
Okay, Ms. Christie, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Just a couple of things. One, just to make it clear, we're not voting on a Bible release policy. The word "Bible" is nowhere in this policy that I have been asked to approve. You know, I feel like I'm getting a lot of emails asking me to support a Bible release policy, but that's not what has been presented to me. And the other thing is, this is, this, we've had this law for two or three years. It's not a brand-new law. I would encourage any parent to exercise that right. I mean, that, that's your right as a parent. You don't need my permission to do that. You don't need a formal policy to do that. As one person who supports this pointed out, you know, that just puts more restrictions on a parent's right. You know, if we're supporting parents' rights, let's just leave things how they are and not restrict them, and let them pursue those opportunities on their own.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. And I, I think I, I do agree with many things that, that Ms. Owen said, but ultimately, Ms. Hill spoke about the fact that the law, that this is allowed under our state law. And I think that, as an entity, we should, we should be upholding parental rights, so I will be supporting the policy. Ms. Satterfield?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I, I get it that it's a law, and it was shared tonight, and I'll also reiterate it, like, just because it's a, there's been many laws on, on the books that have done harm to people. And so, I, I wonder if we took the stance to not support this. Their, Elgin Foundation and the people behind this are not going to back down, so it could be a possibility to actually get this law changed, because it's going to hit, it's already hit national news, worldly news, and so it's going to keep going. And so, this might be the opportunity to correct some of the laws that are on the book that, that, that needs to be changed. So, I hear that point about it's a law, but it's, we could take a stance to say we don't want this law.
Ms. Hoen, if we'll do a roll call vote, please, beginning with District Nine, since we've started there all night? Okay. Ms. Christie?
No.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Ms. Bowns?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Bab?
No.
Mr. Norman?
No.
Ms. Owen?
No.
Ms. Satterfield?
No.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
That's four yes votes and five no. The motion fails. So, the motion fails, okay. And we'll move on to grants. Does any, let's see, do we have a motion on? I'm sorry.
Item 7A, approve East Tennessee Foundation Youth Endowment Fund grant in the amount of $10,000 designated to staff and parent training to combat the impact of adverse childhood experiences.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Satterfield, discussion? We have a couple of lights on. Do you have discussion? Mr. Kelly?
My second.
Ms. Christie? Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
7B, approve memorandum of understanding with the University of Tennessee for the Get Proved Project, and receive $2,500 grant award for each participating school during the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, second by Ms. Hill, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
7C, approve ExxonMobil Foundation volunteer grant in the amount of $500 for Karnes Middle School on behalf of volunteer William Rinkie.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hill, second by Mr. Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
7D, approve donation for North Shore Elementary School PTA in the amount of $48,780 designated for the purchase and installation of synthetic turf playground surfacing at North Shore Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Bab, a second by Mr. Norman, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
7E, approve Walmart Community Grant in the amount of $5,000 for West Valley Middle School to be used for portable flooring for the dance class.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Horn, second by Norman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
8A, approve contract with Johnson Architecture, Inc. in the amount of $893,000 plus reimbursable expenses for the design of a new Adrian Burnett Elementary School.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Bowns, a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B, approve contract with Baseline Sports Instruction LLC for tennis court services not to exceed funds allocated in the general purpose and capital plan budgets for the term January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, a second by Ms. Hill. Mr. Norman?
Thank you. Who, who would answer questions about this contract? Would that be you, Doug? Okay, what, what do we have going as far as tennis court construction in the county? And, we're talking about on the school campuses. So, do, do, what are, what are our plans?
Mr. Dillingham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is actually a, a term contract for maintenance and repair of tennis courts. We do not have any new ones planned at this point in time.
So, how many tennis courts do we have?
Several. Would you like for me to read the list, or can I just?
No, could you give me an estimate, like a ballpark figure?
We have tennis courts at approximately 15 of our facilities, and some of them, we have a single court, others we have two, and then others we have four.
Okay, so, and we're trying to make these courts as, like, standardized courts that meet specs to, what, what do we try to do? I'm curious, from the standpoint of playing on a tennis court, a player who plays on a tennis court has certain expectations. Do we, do we try to?
We do, and a lot of these are at high schools where they actually have competition matches on them. The company that we are putting under contract is Baseline, and they are probably, they're one of the experts in this area for tennis courts, and the rubberized servicing, we also have them for tracks and things of that nature, so.
Okay, good. And I, and I inquired about Baseline, and they, the people that I talked to recommended the company and said, this is a good outfit, guard your pocketbook, it's very expensive.
It's not exactly inexpensive, but they are very, very good, and very good to deal with, too.
It's good, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approve contracts with East Tennessee Fence Company and Stanley Fencing and Landscaping Incorporated for fencing services not to exceed funds allocated in the general purpose and capital plan budgets for the term of January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, which may be extended for four additional years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Norman, a second by Hill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9A, approve fiscal year 2019 school nutrition closeout entries of fund balance designation in the amount of $1,026,800 and budget line item transfer of $80,000.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Norman, a second by Owen. Any discussion? All in, uh, Ms. Christie? No, sorry. That light just keeps coming on. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve purchase of property located at 4511 Brown Gap Road at a cost of $225,000 using fiscal year 2020 capital plan funds.
So moved. We have a motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Bowns. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve purchase of property located at 510 Georgia Avenue and 512 Georgia Avenue at a total cost of $46,000 using fiscal year 2020 capital plan funds.
So moved. Okay. Okay, I'm not sure, was it Ms. Hill? I think we had a motion by Ms. Hill and a second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve proposal to replace the unusable softball facility at Bearden High School at an approximate cost of $360,000 using savings remaining from fiscal year 2019 capital plan projects.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman.
Second.
Second by Ms. Owen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's the end of the regular agenda items, Madam Chair. Thank you. And, public forum?
We have one person on the public forum, Constance Ever.
Okay.
Did she leave?
Okay. Okay, so that's, that's all. Okay. And we are adjourned.